August 4, 2020, in room 137 of the Edison Building. Mr. Michael Munoz, Superintendent of Schools and non-voting ex officio member of the Board, is present. Clerk Director Kathy Nathan, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Amundson?
Here.
Mr. Barlow?
Here.
Ms. Marvin?
Here.
Mr. Schlusner?
Here.
Chair Seelinger?
Here.
Ms. Workman? I'm here. Ms. Workman?
Ms. Workman just typed into chat, "I am having an issue with my computer microphone," I assume.
Okay, great. Thank you. I think we can move on. We'll just, we'll figure out how to call her present, I mean, she's present, although she can't say she's present.
Can you turn on her video? And just wave?
We'll move on and we'll just, we'll put her on a time, at a time when we see her. Okay, Kath? Thanks. 2.01, Approval of the Agenda. Superintendent Munoz?
There are no changes to the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second, Marvin.
Did we get the motion in the second? Clerk? Okay, thank you.
Ms. Amundson?
Aye.
Mr. Barlow?
Aye.
Ms. Marvin?
Aye.
Mr. Schlusner?
Aye.
Chair Seelinger?
Aye.
Ms. Workman? Ms. Nathan?
Aye.
Thank you. Announcements and communication. 3.01, COVID-19 Update. Superintendent?
Yes, at this time, I'm going to share my screen and I would want to share with the Board the summary of the feedback that we received concerning the... My fault. I need to turn this over to Jen Urkey, who will give us an update on this. Jen?
Hi there. So for those of you who don't know me, I am Jen Urkey, Director of Special Education. And as part of that role, I also oversee Health Services. So I have been appointed along with Scott Sheridan as the COVID coordinators for the district. So I'm going to share my screen and talk a little bit about our collaboration with Olmsted County Public Health Services. All right, can you see my screen yet?
Yes.
Okay, great. So at the district level, we have myself and Scott Sheridan as the COVID coordinators. We will also have a COVID coordinator in every building in the district. Those people have not been assigned yet, but we are looking at using administration in collaboration with district and building LSN, the Licensed School Nurses. So Olmsted County Public Health Services, we have direct contact with them, multiple meetings and phone calls which enables us to collaborate with them on this pandemic. We have those regular meetings. And then when we have a positive case, we really work hand-in-hand with them, whether it's a student or a staff member. We connect with Olmsted County Public Health Services and they help us through the process. So as we see here, if we're notified ahead of time, whether it's a staff member that contacts us, or a parent, or the student themselves, we contact the county and they are able to help us walk through that process. We take guidance from them and they tell us who needs to quarantine and for how long. So that's not something that we determine, we listen to the experts in that area. If and when we have to send out communication to families or groups of people, the county also prepares that template for us so that we are able to put that information in there and send it to who member needs to receive that. And they are also there all the time to help with follow-up questions. We have them on speed dial and we're able to communicate as needed. Olmsted County then moves into their case investigation and contact tracing system where they really need to identify any of those individuals that were in close contact to the positive individual. And they define that close contact as being within six feet for 15 minutes or more. And people typically assume that it's 15 minutes at a time, but we have come to find out that it's 15 minutes cumulative. So if I'm with somebody for 10 minutes now and 10 minutes later, that would be considered a close contact. Even though we are looking at masks, and it's a mask mandate in the state, they still don't exclude people just because they have masks. It is a preventative measure, but if they are within that six feet for 15 minutes or more, they are considered a close contact. Then as they go through their contact tracing, if there are other individuals that need to be quarantined because of that close contact, then they let us know that as well. We follow any guidance given to us by Olmsted County Public Health Services, just based on the situation. They're trying to create some flow charts for us so we really know how to move from one place to the next. However, every situation seems to be very unique and we just call if we have questions and they help us work through it. Questions that you have for me based on this information? Or Scott?
So thanks, Ms. Urkey. I thought it would be great for you to come and help us learn more about the process, some of which lies outside of school district control. And I think, you know, we are really fortunate to be in Rochester with Mayo Clinic and Olmsted County being partners with us to help field these questions. So I appreciate you coming and giving us this overview. I see Director Nathan has a question. Go ahead. Unmute though.
Under Positive Case, it says that Olmsted County will prepare a template letter to communicate with groups as needed. How do you decide how wide that notification is? I mean, I can understand through contact tracing if you identify someone who's been in that six feet, 15-minute zone, but beyond that, how wide can people expect to be notified?
That also really, we also really get that from Olmsted County. If it's, you know, isolated to one particular classroom, they would let us know that. If it's a grade level that needs to get that information, or if it's an entire building. This is not new to us or to the county because we go through this with other infectious diseases like measles, for example. And so they take a look at how widespread they feel the disease could possibly have gone in terms of how many people need to be notified. And we really, we try to not specify, you know, we say an individual, we don't say who obviously was, who tested positive. And we're trying to leave it so that the people that need to know are informed, but we're not going, you know, to the entire district because somebody tested positive in one of the buildings.
Thank you. That's good information. Other questions, Board members? I'm giving it a few minutes, just in case people need to pop in and out. Oh, okay. I see Julie has a question, and so we're going to see if Director Workman has audio in order to ask her question. Give it a try. Okay, Director Workman, we can't hear you. So could you type your question into the chat? And I see Director Amundson and then Director Schlusner, and then we'll make sure that we get Director Workman's question in. Go ahead, Director Amundson.
Thank you. I was talking to a concerned citizen today and the question arose whether or not we know the typical length of time it's taking in Olmsted County for test results to come back in, and whether that would change like over a weekend. And so basically, the question is, do you happen to know how long it might be until we can react to a positive case?
Thank you. Yes, we actually met with Director Graham Briggs from Olmsted County Public Health, and he said that typically in Olmsted County in Rochester, it's taking one to two days. It could take up to three days, but it has not been taking that long locally.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, it's kind of a question for Mr. Munoz. Is, I know we have, it's on topic, but it's related to next week. I know we have a special session on Monday to continue discussions more around this year's school plan for COVID. Since I am unavailable for the special session, I'm wondering when the materials will be available for me to review and comment on them before the meeting.
Well, unfortunately, we're not going to be able to do our typical timeline for, typically, we like to have it by Friday morning for a Tuesday meeting. We are meeting tomorrow with Mayo Clinic, and then we have a smaller group of Mayo Clinic and Public Health Meeting on Thursday. So our plan is hopefully the end of that day on Thursday that we decide on what model that's going to be, and then we will release that on Friday. So when it's released to the public, we can get that in Board Docs at that time.
Okay, Friday certainly works. Thank you.
Okay. Did you get everything answered, Mark?
Yes.
Okay. And again, apologies for our setup this evening. Superintendent and I are in the same large room apart from each other, but I have to work with my muting and et cetera on my computer to make sure that I can hear him and others. So there's a little bit of a delay. Any other questions for Ms. Urkey? I'm not seeing anything in the chat or any hands raised. Ms. Urkey, I really want to thank you for the work you're doing on behalf of the district. I feel, you know, I feel like we're in good hands, as I said, you know. And off-topic, maybe the most important question is, you know, what's your dog's name? Because your dogs are cute. We have to have some fun when we're at board meetings, right?
Yes, absolutely, yes. And I just want to add one more thing, because most of the state, Minnesota Department of Health actually does the case investigations and the contact tracing. So I feel we are very fortunate that we have the capacity in Olmsted County to do that contact tracing locally. I do think it moves a little swifter and we do have that core group of people that we are able to communicate with. So that's just something to add. I wasn't sure if people were aware of that, but it's really convenient and we're very fortunate to have that.
Great, that's great information for us to have. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for having me on today and have a great evening.
Okay, thanks. Take care. 3.02, School Board Committee Assignments Update. I have a few, even though we call this item Committee Assignment Updates, we know that we often put some general announcements in here as well. And so I have a few. Let me get started. I want to very briefly address a recent claim that Superintendent Munoz and the school board allegedly hid information regarding property donation for a middle school site. It is unfortunate that I have to comment on this issue at a time when Rochester Public Schools Administration and staff are working extremely hard to plan for next school year in the face of unprecedented global health crisis. Let me be clear one more time. The allegation that Superintendent Munoz hid a potential property donation from the school board, or that the district hid the potential donation from the public, is patently and categorically false. We are extremely disappointed that this false narrative was spread on social media. It is divisive and our community deserves better. The district believes the selection of a new middle school site was done in a transparent manner and within the bounds of what the law allows. I also want to take this opportunity to thank community members for submitting public comments via email over the last few weeks. Board members have received copies and the topics have included anti-racism curriculum, school board start times, early childhood deaf and hard of hearing, student resource officers, and band instruction. We appreciate all your comments and the value of your input. At the July 21 study session, the school board discussed committee assignments and we will be updating some charge statements and documents very soon. Board members, do you have any committee assignments that you have attended? I know it's kind of a lull time. I have one, but I will let anyone report in with a hand raise. Mr. Schusner?
Yes, we usually have regular updates from the construction projects, but I thought I would share that, you know, we do meet weekly on this, usually for an hour, hour and a half. Good discussions, getting into some of the finer details related to the schools, you know, such as, say, administrative desk placement and stuff like that. It's been really great to see the progress that's coming along and there's some really cool stuff coming our way. There's been good discussions about trade-offs between capital dollars and operational dollars and some of the construction decisions being made. So while we do have referendum dollars, we are thinking and talking about future costs as well and trying to be as efficient as we can. There've been great discussions.
Thank you, Director Schusner, for giving us that update and serving in that committee. I don't know if you have the information in front of you, I'm putting you on the spot, about the Longfellow meeting?
I do not have that right in front of me now.
Okay, I'll bring it up unless somebody else has it quicker.
I do.
Okay. Sorry, can I just budge in, Director Amundson, and have Ms. Nathan let us know about the public opportunity? Thanks.
So the public opportunity is this Wednesday from, oh gosh, I thought I knew if it was 6:00, 6:30 to 7:00. Yeah. I should know it because I just posted it. Wednesday night, the event is on the Rochester Public Schools Facebook page, and it is a Microsoft Teams link that you can join at. And I will clarify the time.
It's next Wednesday, August 12th, I'm seeing.
August 12th, yes.
Yes, Superintendent?
Yes, the community one is next Wednesday, stated at 6:00 PM. This coming Wednesday is for the Longfellow staff.
Director Nathan?
And the staff is a... Am I muted now?
Now you're muted, now you're unmuted. You're good.
Superintendent, the staff is a non-community event, right? It's only accessible to staff through the link they received.
True.
Okay, thanks.
We were clear as mud on that, sorry, folks. We tried. Director Amundson, thanks for your patience.
No problem. I'm going to jump in for Director Rickman, who is evidently still having problems because we were at the same meeting. So I know that Director Rickman was going to report for Rochester Public School Foundation. Rochester Public School Foundation officially decided to call off Boo Fest this year because of the COVID. It just didn't seem like a good idea to have that many people in one place, and it's really coming up quite soon, which is a pity because the event would have been on actual Halloween this year. So it might be, you know, six, seven, eight more years before we can do that again. And because then the main fundraiser of the year won't be happening, we had already suspended the spring grant cycle. We are likely to suspend the fall grant cycle, partially for the funding concerns, but also partially because it's very difficult for staff to propose a project that might depend on being in person or in the classroom and not know what's really going to be happening for the next, you know, half a year to a year or longer. So because we did have some grants that we awarded in the past cycle that depended on being in person and they weren't able to be completed. So until further notice, the grant cycles will be suspended until things are predictable once again.
Thank you, Director Amundson, and especially on behalf of Director Workman. So sorry to hear about Boo Fest because it was an amazing opportunity and event for our community. You know, lots of board members volunteered their time. You, of course, spent hours and hours and hours and hours and hours there. One question about Public School Foundation, was there any discussion about maybe doing something if we do continue to be not in school physically, like opening some grant opportunities for some sort of innovation in these different times?
I think if the conditions continue like this, we might look at that. But we had been on a cycle where we were spending the Boo Fest funds immediately on grant requests. So while we do have some funds left over from last year's Boo Fest, it isn't a full grant cycle's worth. So it really is the immediacy of the cash flow situation that might prevent that from happening.
Okay, but of course, individuals could donate anytime.
And we will likely have a direct donation campaign, you know, we will see how that goes and then we'll see what we're able to talk about.
Okay, thank you so much. Thanks for answering my questions. Director Nathan, do you have something to report? Yep, nope. Just gone again. Okay. All right. I have lost internet connection and a different device, so hang on just a second, I'm going back and forth between my... Let's see. Okay. 4, Consent Agenda. Are there any items Board members wish to pull off the consent agenda? Director Nathan?
I'd like to remove Item 4.03, Approval of Rights Rules, Regulations, and Procedural Code Revision.
Okay, any other items? Julie, now we can hear you.
Good.
We just heard a swear word, so... Let's see. All right. I need a motion to approve two items from the consent agenda, 4.01, Human Resource Actions, and 4.02, Addendum to Superintendent Employment Contract 1920.
Move to approve, Marvin.
Second, Schlusner.
Okay. Clerk Nathan?
Ms. Amundson?
Aye.
Mr. Barlow?
Aye.
Ms. Marvin?
Aye.
Mr. Schlusner?
Aye.
Chair Seelinger?
Aye.
Ms. Workman?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you see me?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm on my phone. What am I voting on?
Consent Agenda, two items.
Aye, I guess.
Ms. Nathan, aye.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we have one item removed for individual consideration. Director Nathan, will you speak to your removal?
Sure. So we only get one shot at this agenda item every year. So, and because the student handbook will be important to our community in whatever model that we use, and the student handbook and rights rules and regulations really delineate our discipline policies, which have been a concern of members in our community for multiple reasons, but particularly since the murder of George Floyd. So I just wanted to make sure that we were absolutely accurate in this document, and I also wanted to talk about a correct implementation of policy. So there were some edits to the actual student handbook that I sent to the superintendent, and some of them were made, but some of them were not. And I just wanted to make sure that I had them on the table because I don't know if it's actually being printed this year, or if it's just going to be electronic. Superintendent, I don't have to go through the changes that weren't actually made in the student handbook document if you just say that they're going to be made?
Yes, they will be. We thought we made those changes, I'm not sure why they didn't show up. And as far as the updated policy, I think 506, we thought we copied it right out of Board Docs, but we are trying to check on that. But yes, we will make those corrections.
Okay, great.
And we are planning to print copies and we'll mail them out to families like we did last year.
Great, okay. So that's the first thing. And then, so the second, as the background information reflected the changes that were made in the document, I can just let people know what they were. So we just added three more policies that were actually in Policy 506 as being part of Rights Rules Regulations. Their chemical use and abuse, distribution of non-school-sponsored materials on school premises, and student parental family and marital status notification. And also something that the superintendent had let us know, that we added COVID-19 to the list of infectious diseases that are listed in the book. So in addition to the changes that are already in the background information, those were, I mean, minor, if you will, but just wanted to make sure that they're accurate so that we have that going forward. May I continue?
Hang on just a second. Director Amundson?
Director Nathan, you referenced some changes and the superintendent said that those would be made. Could you highlight those quickly for those of us who weren't part of that discussion?
Sure. The only actual changes to the student handbook document were adding references to those three policies that I just mentioned, 417, 505, and 528. And then District Policy 506 is actually reprinted in the handbook in its entirety, and we updated it July of 2020, and just the most recent... And just the most recent version wasn't copied and pasted correctly. So that's just a quick copy and paste.
Yeah. I think the problem is it might have been approved, but Wendy hasn't had a chance to get it in Board Docs. Because I thought we copied it word for word right out of what's in Board Docs at this time.
Right. No, that makes sense.
Director Rikman?
Oh, okay. I'm sorry to backtrack a little bit. I started talking, and then I realized that you guys couldn't hear me and maybe not see me either. I did want to pull 4.02, the Addendum to the Superintendent Employment Contract, off the agenda or out of the consent agenda to inquire about the fact that there is no addendum in Board Docs for that. And I hate to vote on something I can't see.
Well, apologies, Ms. Workman. That's actually what you were voting on right when you popped up on the screen. And it was added before the meeting started. So if you, you might have to refresh your Board Docs.
Okay. Okay. Then I'm good. Then I'm good.
And I do want to clarify the reason for that. We were waiting for it from our attorney. So as soon as the attorney sent it, we put it in Board Docs.
No. And, okay. Yeah, I'm afraid to touch anything on my computer right now because it's like, man, I'm going to fall off the face of the earth or something.
Yeah, maybe don't.
But yes. Okay, so fine. All right. I'm good with all of that then. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, and back to Director Nathan and 4.03.
Okay, so the second piece, the 4.03, and it's something that I can't do formally, following Robert's Rules of Order, because I looked that up for you, Deborah, is after we move approval and have discussion, I'm going to make a motion to amend the resolution to add that we approve the student handbook as well as the Rights Rules, Regulations, and Procedural Code. This has just been something that's been on my radar for a while now. I just like consistency in how we approach things. So we've had some years where we've approved the handbook, some years where we've approved Rights Rules, Regulations, and some years where we've approved both. And I'd just like to see us going forward following what's in policy. And in Policy 305, we approved the Rights Rules and Regulations. And in Policy 208, we approved the handbook. So this just puts us in alignment with policy.
Hang on. I got Director Barlow.
Thank you, and it may not be a point of order, but it certainly sounds rather odd to me, especially given the fact that there's an issue before us, and it's not customary in terms of what I'm... I guess I don't want to chase a rabbit that even though there's a desire to propose something which hasn't been approved or supported, yet the defense for the recommendations already been presented. I just think that's a point of order that we should probably rein in and not allow to occur because it sets an undue advantage, if you will. But that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Director Barlow. Director Amundson?
I'm sensing that there's some confusion. I'm wondering if Director Nathan could explain it again more slowly.
Well, I think in order to make Director Barlow comfortable, I will move approval of this... Yes. I will move approval of this item so that we can have a discussion. And should I choose to make an amendment, that would be where I would make it. So I'm going to move approval.
Second, Amundson.
Okay, hang on. It's been moved and... It's been moved and seconded to move item 4.03, Approval of the Rights, Rules, Regulations, and Procedural Code Revisions. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Roll call.
Discussion. Sorry.
Discussion about moving it?
No, no. Discussion of approval. This is, we don't have... It's already an action item. So we're moving approval, and following move approval, there's discussion. So my discussion is I would like to move to amend the resolution to read, be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District approve the Rights, Rules, Regulations, and Procedural Code and the Student Handbook for the 2020-21 school year.
Okay, I'm getting too many hands. Sorry. Director Marvin?
I think... Can you hear me right now? Kind of? Better? Okay. That in addition to the changes that Director Nathan noted that needed to be made and that will be made, I think the issue right now is that every year, the School Board reviews the student handbook and accepts it. So the language in the... Can you hear me now?
No, we have a motion without a second. So we can't discuss anything. We need a second to discuss the amendment. We need a second.
I second it. Marvin?
Do we need to vote on the...
Kathy's shaking her head no.
I think it's been moved and seconded. I think this is when we discuss.
Yes.
Thank you. Go ahead, Jean.
So my point was, every year, we review the student handbook, and the issue is, do we accept it or approve it? Policy says we need to approve it. And Director Nathan, correct me if I'm wrong. I think that's what you're suggesting, is that it needs, along with Rights Rules and regs, it needs to be approved, not just reviewed and accepted. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Could I get that policy number that referenced that again, Kathy?
It's Policy 208, Development, Adoption, and Implementation of Policy, Section 5, Implementation of Policy. And it says, "These guidelines and directives, including employee and student handbook, shall be subject to annual view and... the review and approval by the School Board."
Director Amundson?
So that this doesn't happen again in the future, Director Nathan, what would need to change is the part I'm confused about.
So we... Every year, when this comes before us as this resolution, it would read the way that I'm amending the resolution to read today.
Thank you.
So the problem is the practice and the policy are not in line. And so the policy last reviewed in 2018, Policy 208, the section that Kathy is referencing, says that employee and student handbooks are subject to annual review and approval of the School Board. We, of course, well, in my time, or at least my time I can remember, have never seen an employee handbook. And so this is sort of having the student handbook referenced along with the employee handbook in there is a little bit buried in the policy. So that's why it's probably got lost. Director Workman?
Could Kathy read her amendment again?
So the resolution would read, be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District approve the Rights, Rules, Regulations, and Procedural Code and the Student Handbook for the 2020-21 school year.
Thank you.
Superintendent? Sorry. Director Barlow, do you have your hand up? I'm sorry, I'm kind of losing it on the screen. Go ahead, Director Barlow.
Thank you. Just wanted to... Director Amundson had asked a question regarding how this would relate to future iterations of this process. And Director Nathan suggested it would, by the amending of this motion, would automatically occur. And I think what would need to occur is, if that's the desire or intent, shouldn't that be in our policy versus amending a recommendation? Because it sounds like it's a policy question that is being raised and not a resolution issue. And the amendment is just in regards to the resolution. I would be supportive of, if the Board is in agreement, to a policy change to reflect that. But to not automatically assume by making the statement, well, in future years, this will automatically be the case. Well, there's no policy establishing that.
Go ahead, Director Nathan.
So Don, the point of talking about Policy 208 is that Policy 208 already establishes that the Board reviews and approves student handbook. So the language is already in our policy. Our practice has not been following the policy.
Ms. Workman?
Yes, until we actually change the policy, if we decide we want to change policy, the current policy stands unless, for some reason, it's against the law, and I don't believe it is. Otherwise, we would have heard something from MSBA, or maybe this is one of our own policies. So I think there's been a concerted effort on the Policy Committee to make sure that we are staying true to form. And if this policy needs to be re-reviewed and re-discussed, we can do that. This is not the time to do that. So I would support Director Clerk Nathan on this one.
Director Nathan? Okay. Director Nathan, did you say something? Because your mic isn't on.
I'm having trouble with my mouth. So my hand is down, and I am muted.
You're having trouble with your mouse or your mouth?
Both, apparently.
Okay. Okay, everybody. We're going to get through it. Wendy's never going to leave us again. Okay, so we have a motion on the table to amend the resolution to read... Check me if I get it wrong. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 approve the Rights, Rules, Regulations, and Procedural Code and Student Handbook for the 2020-21 school year. Did I get that correct? Thumbs up, please. I'm getting a head shake from Kathy.
Move approval, Workman? Move approval, Workman?
I don't know if we have to move approval. I don't...
Sorry.
Yeah, I don't think we need to move approval. I think if we want to take the vote, we can call the question.
Okay, I guess, I thought we were making a language change in Board Docs. Is that correct?
To the resolution. And the motion was already to amend. The resolution was seconded. So we had discussion.
Oh, now we vote?
Now we vote.
Okay, I apologize. I'm really not this stupid all the time, but technology, I love it when it works.
Yep.
I think I'm with the program now, so...
Okay. We have a motion, a second, and a resolution. We are now going to call the question. Ms. Nathan, would you please do the roll call vote on approving the amendment, the amended resolution?
No, we're just approving the amendment. Right, okay. Ms. Amundson?
Aye.
Mr. Barlow?
Aye.
Ms. Marvin?
Aye.
Mr. Schlusner?
Aye.
Chair Seehlinger?
Aye.
Ms. Workman?
Aye.
Ms. Nathan, aye.
Okay, so now we've approved the amendment on the resolution, so we need to approve the resolution, which is already an action item. I'm looking at my Robert's Rules of Order people for their head nods.
I will officially call the question on the resolution.
Thank you.
Ms. Amundson?
Aye.
Mr. Barlow?
Aye.
Ms. Marvin?
Aye.
Mr. Schlusner?
Aye.
Chair Seehlinger?
Aye.
Ms. Workman?
Aye.
Ms. Nathan, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
All right, moving on. Five, High Student Achievement, 5.01, Fall 2020, Opening Feedback. This is an information item. Superintendent Munoz?
Yes, I was so excited to share this information to you tonight that I jumped the gun. But I am going to share my screen here. All right, we provided a feedback tool for parents, and we did a Survey Monkey. We send it to all families using Sky Alert, email, phone, text on July 21st. RPS staff also received the same survey, just as an FYI. And we had a specific survey just for staff that was sent out July 30th and open until August 3rd. The family survey was open through 4:00 PM on July 27th. We had a little over 3,900 individuals fill out the survey. We shared the information on a website story and several Facebook and Twitter posts. We also had a town hall meeting on July 23rd. We had over 130 individuals attend that town hall. And the video playback and all questions and answers were available the following day on our website. This is just the first question that we asked on the survey, just to kind of get a... Even though we were asking for feedback on the three models, we did put a question in asking them which of the three models or scenarios they were most comfortable with. And if you see, we have both a visual graph or the numbers there below. Number one means that's the model or scenario that they felt most comfortable with. So if you look at, for example, on in-person, we had 44% score in-person as number one, being their most comfortable. And then down to 44% of these said that it was their least comfortable model. And then the same for the other three models. So you see the percentages of what they felt most comfortable and least comfortable with. And then clearly in the right-hand column gives you the total number of individuals that completed that question. The common themes we heard in the area of safety were in the area of masks and helping children know how to properly wear the mask and making sure that all students and staff are wearing masks. There's a theme about visitors, will they be allowed in the building? There's thoughts about mental health and watching out for others. There's questions about quarantine, wanting more information about when and how. So hopefully, tonight's presentation done by Jen will let them know that really, public health takes leadership role in that, and they determine who needs to be notified and how we notify them. There was questions also about contact tracing. That is also done by public health. And then we do assist public health in any way we can to help them with that contact tracing. And then there was also comments about having consistent cohorts of students within groups, very similar to what we're... very similar to what we're doing now in SAC, where we have students attending SAC. There are eight students assigned to two adults, and they stay within that cohort together throughout the day. So, that was also a theme that we heard. There was a lot of conversation about hand sanitizer on the buses and in the classrooms. And then, comments about gathering and boarding large groups of events that have large groups of people. And in the area of learning, there was themes about learning models different by level and having the flexibility for parents to choose and move between the models. There was comments about the metrics, publishing the metrics from switching between models. You know, what data will we use to determine that we need to adjust from one model to a different model? There was comments about relationships, saying it was extremely important, no matter what model we're in, that we really keep that as a focus. Comments about support, more support for students with special needs. Engagement, providing learning activities that focus on more engagement. Training, helping parents learn the tools that their students will be using. There were comments about having consistency, uniform expectations for all student learning. Communication, having uniform expectations between home and school, and having high expectations in the area of greater rigor in the distance learning model. Continuing in the learning theme, there was comments about scheduling. Students will receive weekly schedules from their teachers. There was comments about making sure that there's direct instruction, live instruction with teachers, especially in the distance learning model. A lot of comments about having a common platform. So, parents that have students across multiple levels, having the same platform used for all students makes it easier and better for parents. There was comments about having, being able to connect and having access to technology and Wi-Fi. There was comments about having access to devices. And then, there was comments in the hybrid model about the one day a week in person not being enough in-person time. And then, traditional methods incorporate some non-technology learning into distance learning, not just having distance learning using technology, having some paper pencil-type So, that's kind of a summary of the themes that we came out of the parent survey. The task force members, the 160 individuals, did look at the feedback from the parents, and they focused just on areas that they are working on and made some adjustments to their plans based on the feedback that they received from parents. Not everything that was recommended was suggested to be moved forward by the task force, but some of them were. As I mentioned on the previous, the first slide, that we are currently surveying staff. And as of, I think, Monday, we had 800 staff already complete that survey. So, we've been monitoring that feedback as it comes in every day and using that as we continue this work. But the overall purpose of both the parent survey and the staff survey was just feedback on the three models. It's not on which model we should choose to come back. It was what feedback do you have specifically on the three different models? So, that's kind of where we're at now. We will, like I said, the staff one survey closes, I think, today or tomorrow. And then, we will take a deeper look in that. And the task force will also be able to look at that information and make any changes to the models, depending on that feedback they receive from parents.
Thank you, Superintendent. Looks like Director Nathan has a question.
Okay. I think I'm on. So, Superintendent, on the survey itself, were we able to use any of our bilinguals or connections with families for whom English is not their primary language to get any feedback?
Yes, we did. Very similar that we do when we do all of our surveys. We did ask our bilinguals to make their contacts with the families that they work with and help them through completing that survey.
This might not be a question you can ask tonight, but we're going to be putting more information out to the community this week. And you have the Q&amp;A document that was really clarifying of some of the issues. If right now, there's a family that needs some help understanding the material because of a language barrier, are the bilinguals accessible if they need to reach out to that for that service?
Yeah. Their best bet is to call the district office or call the superintendent's office. And we do not have them coming into Edison every day right now, but we can take the individual's name and contact information and pass that on and have one of the bilinguals reach out to them.
Okay. Great. Good to know that resource is available. I'll let somebody else ask a question.
Okay. Thanks. I'll ask a, not a philosophical question. I'm not sure what to call it. Were you surprised? Were there any surprises in the results? Or did you have any expectation of what we would see?
Not really. I think a lot of the themes that we picked up were questions that we were already receiving beforehand, either directly to us or questions that were being passed on to board members. So, I don't think there were a lot of surprises. And some of them were very similar to, you know, for example, the one about not having the, if we're in distance learning, have it all be technology-driven. That came up even with the survey we did at the end of the school year last year, getting feedback on how distance learning went. And then, another example from that survey we did end of last school year, parents said, "We need one platform, because if I have multiple children, it's very difficult." So, that was one that we had heard previously, but we heard it again with this feedback.
Thank you. Director Marvin?
Thank you. This isn't a question. It's a comment, and it's personal. I've been involved with school districts since 1973. And from my perspective, there has never been a more difficult, more challenging time than the one we're facing now. And I wish that there were an elegant, perfect solution that would address all the issues and work for every family. And the reality is, right now, there isn't. But I have to say, as being someone who is skeptical about everything, I have never known a cabinet or an administration or a community task force to work harder and with more intelligence and dedication than this. I think that they are doing everything they can to assure the community that families will have choices. We can't control everything, that the entire community has to come together and help our kids, that our schools are important, education is important, our teachers are important, but that we are listening and that, right now, we've got an administrative team and a community team that are working 80-hour weeks to try to address this. And it won't be perfect, but I've never been more convinced that this school district is doing everything within its ability to try to keep our families and our schools safe and do what we can do to provide the appropriate education for every single kid. So, I just, I don't think we can underestimate the work, the emotion, the exhaustion that this administration is facing. And I really, really appreciate that. It's not a question, it's just a comment. And it's from a mother and a grandmother of five grandchildren who are currently in our district, so...
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Director Nathan?
Sorry. I'm going to echo what Ms. Marvin said and just add thanks. I've spent a lot of time reading through the district's recommendations so far and cross-referencing them against what the governor has put forth in guidelines. And if I had a big scroll where I could have a number of boxes of what the guidelines are and check off whether we've addressed them already, it would be a long scroll, and there would be a lot of checkmarks. And that's incredibly impressive, because there are hundreds of pages of guidance that you're being asked to use to make these decisions. So, from a person who likes to tick every box, I almost want to assure the community, if you haven't read the documents, they're long for a reason, because they're covering so many of the areas that we need to address. Given that, though, we still have a decision to make next week. And I'm wondering, for the edification of the viewing public and people who may have thought something different was happening tonight, can you lay out what people can expect to happen at the meeting Monday? And for the board members, what, how is the plan that's coming out going to look different or supplement the materials you've already put out to the public?
Well, first of all, the timeline. As I mentioned in response to Mark's question, we have two important meetings coming up. We have one tomorrow and another one on Thursday. Our plan is to make a public announcement on Friday, our recommendation for starting to fall pending board approval on Monday. I would say you may see some tweaks than what's already been put out publicly because of the feedback we received, and the task force had made some adjustments based on that feedback. If you're an employee, they're going to probably see a lot more... The staff survey that went out had a lot more detail than the parent one that went out. So, I think whatever plan we end up starting, we'll put as much information out on our website as possible. Knowing, though, however, you know, for example, if, and this is just an example, I don't want anybody to misread this example, that, oh, here's, oh, I know what the decision's going to be. If, for example, hybrid would be the model selected or part of the model selected, you know, we may say, okay, two days a week, you're going to be in person in school. Buildings are going to have to determine which groups are going to be, you know, is it a Monday, Tuesday for Group A, Thursday, Friday for Group B? I mean, that will have to be communicated out to the parents by the building once they determine what those groups are. So, there'll be a little more building-specific information that they will be responsible for communicating out to their families, so they have, they know, you know, if it happens to be a hybrid, what group they're in and what that means and what days they would come to school.
And just, let me interject for the viewing public. So, we knew that after the governor announced or made his remarks last week, that district was going to be making a, administration was going to be making a decision and announcement this week. The Minnesota School Board Association had two webinars last week and has drafted a sample resolution. And so, it's... So, while the district is making the recommendation and the plan, we felt like we would add a meeting for sort of approval of what they kept referring to as the base plan, knowing that whatever learning model we start with may change based on our health data in our local community. So, that's just to clarify kind of those two pieces of going forward. I do want to circle back to one thing I see Amy Icke has put in the chat regarding our families who may be non-English speakers. She says that IMAA is also helping connect with families. And so, just thanks for sharing that, Amy, and appreciation for our community partners that are helping us reach our families.
Director Admonson?
Thank you. So, based on what Chair Selinger was just explaining for the viewing public, Superintendent Munoz, would you say it's safe to say because we could be moving from any plan at any time? What? What? I'm not here?
It was me.
I can see Melissa.
Thank you.
It said I was unmuted. I couldn't...
Yeah, sorry. I have to apologize again. It's because Superintendent and I are in the same room, so when Superintendent talks, I have to turn off my audio, and then I forget to turn it back on to hear you. So, sorry. You were speaking, yes. Sorry, pick it up. You're not crazy.
Superintendent Munoz, would you say it's safe to say because we could be moving between all the plans, that the best advice for parents is to be prepared for all of the possibilities, to have a plan ready to go for any one of those possibilities?
Yeah. I think that's a very safe thing to say. And, you know, our goal is to, like I said on Friday, announce our recommendation. And then, we plan to give a timeframe to say we are committing to this model up until this date, unless something drastically changes in the local data. But just so they can have at least a range of time that we'll keep with this model for this time. And then, as it gets closer to that end date, then we will reevaluate where we are, and we'll either continue it out another so many weeks or whatever, or we may have to say, no, we're going to have to scale back, or we can open up more based on the data. And, you know, we're pretty fortunate that we have a good relationship with public health. And, you know, the data we looked at on Monday is, it's really impressive, the data that our public health looks at, not only number, you know, most people see on TV the number of cases that we have in Homestead County every day and the number of deaths and so on. But we shared a lot more deeper information, which is very helpful for us as we look at making that final decision. But, yeah, it's, and I think that's what's the intent of the governor and MDE for making us have all three plans, that knowing that you may have to jump from one to the next. Originally, it was, we were told that we would have one day to make that transition, but now, the new governor's executive order came out, we would be allowed five days to make that switch. But we also need to know, too, and I've been pretty public about this when I've talked about this, that it may not be the entire district. It may be we have a school that has to switch to a different model, and the rest of the schools are in a different model based on the data that we have.
So, just to be super, ultra, hyper-clear for the viewing public, this would be kind of like having a plan for a snow day. We may think we're going down, you know, one of the options, but anytime a blizzard could come and you need to have a plan in place for one of the other alternatives. Unless, of course, you're one of the families who is opting into 100% distance learning. Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Yes. I'd like some clarification on the team that's been working on this for so long. And I really appreciate the fact that you've had so much input and all the hard work. Just to echo what Director Marvin said earlier, it's just, it's an incredible feat, and I know everybody's kind of stressed out about it. But just for the school board's edification on this, from the governor's Safe Learning Plan on page eight, it says that school districts and charter schools should use their current incident command team or advisory council, which also has school board members on it, in determination of making the learning model. I actually probably said that kind of backwards. "After preparing a thorough review of the base learning model, then school districts must make a determination of the learning model to begin the school year for each school. In making this determination, school districts and charter schools should..." Or do we have a current incident command team, which, okay, that's kind of a mouthful, or a current advisory council? Are those two things separate from what you're currently doing?
I would say yes. And I guess I'm looking at the governor's order right in front of me and, which is on page five and number 11, it says, and I'll not read the whole paragraph, but at the last, it says, "I direct MDE to develop guidance related to the composition and duties of incident command teams." So I think the one you're referencing is the MDE guidance, which is not a requirement. I'm looking.
I have it, it's on page eight of the governor's Safe Learning Plan, so, and that's what I'm quoting on it. I did raise this question earlier in the week and I haven't checked my email in the last couple hours, but I haven't, I didn't see a response to that particular one.
Yeah, so, so let me weigh in. What was, the reference you made to the material, Director Workman, was the use of the term "command team" or "advisory team," that was not something that was used in previous direction given to the district? And so, that was a little, it was sort of, well, I should speak for Superintendent, it was a little surprising that it was put out that way. What we decided to do was, there is a team meeting this week, and so Director Marvin or I will be on that team, and that will be the, from what I understand, the final team to actually meet before making that determination. So, that we felt like is sort of trying to honor the intention of the guidance. And also remember, as we've seen many of these documents, some of the items, not this necessarily particularly, but many of these items are required and many of them are guidance. And so it's kind of just sussing out all the information.
Yeah, I guess I would just say we've had a group that's been working for the district. I wouldn't say we've adopted the official title that the governor referenced, and that's been Cabinet members and Public Health and Mayo Clinic. So we did talk to Deborah and Jean on Monday and asked that one of them or both of them could join that group to meet that. Like I said, I must have a different governor's order than what you have, Julie, because I'm looking at it right now and on page five is number 11, he does reference that. And, but, we do have that in place.
I see Ms. Heather Nessler, our communications director, has her hand up. Heather, did you, Ms. Nessler, did you have something to add on this topic?
No, and I don't have my hand up.
Okay, somebody has their hand up, but it's kind of, oh, I know why. It's Kathy, it's over your picture, apologies, I'm sorry. So many things here, folks, so many things, okay. Director Nathan, sorry, Heather.
Superintendent, so, again, with the timeline, once the board has approved the model to open the school year, I know that the directive is that we have the model, but families also have an option to choose distance learning. What will be the process of families to identify, once we've made our selection, what their selection will be?
We will notify them and give them a document to complete to, if they are choosing to go distance learning, very similar to what we did with Longfellow, which started on the 27th, and they, we did have some families that opted to do the distance learning. So we'll use the same form that we use for them.
Dang it, okay. Hello, Director Marvin, could you not hear me? I was just saying that I was getting good at using both hands to mute and unmute in the right places. Apparently, I was wrong. Is there any other questions on the information before us about the feedback from families? I'll pause a moment and see if anybody wants to break in. I appreciate, in the document, that the themes are broken up into safety and learning. I really feel like the questions that we've seen in the public or in our email have kind of varied between the two. And so, I want to make sure that we're, you know, we're not prioritizing one over the other, but as Ms. Irkey said, some of the safety issues are, working with public health, are next to us in the school building. And so, just expressing appreciation for how that was separated. Superintendent? Okay, not helping if you're putting your hand up when you don't mean to. Looks like we have Director Nathan and then, I think, Director Amundson.
So I don't know if this is a question for the chair or for the superintendent, but in the notice for the special session on Monday, it's indicated just for an hour. And having watched a number of other school boards when they have made this very decision, those meetings have been rather long. And one of the, one of the reasons could be was that there was presentations on the plan and presentations on the options and the opportunity for board members to ask questions and then, of course, have a discussion. Is it really gonna be an hour?
Well, I don't know if it'll be, probably not. With this board, it may take longer than that. But I guess I would say that we are probably doing ours much different than most districts. When I talk to other superintendents, they don't have 160-member task force, they're not meeting regularly with their medical experts and public health like we have. So, I can't speak what other boards are doing, I can just say, I think we've included a lot of people and have given a lot of feedback, gotten feedback from a lot of people, which will help us make our decision. I guess I wasn't aware that Wendy only put an hour. I didn't realize that on our agendas, we put an end time for meetings. So I guess I'm surprised that she did put an end time. Usually, we just post, I'm looking at the agenda for today, and it just says at 4:00 PM, does not give an end time. So, we're not gonna turn electricity off in one hour if we're still there, but I'm hoping that the board realized that we had many individuals working on this plan, these plans, and anywhere from teachers, I mean, every employee group's been represented, we had students, we had parents, we had public health, we had Mayo Clinic, all part of this task force. So, I think we went above and beyond most districts have done in order to create their three different models.
Yeah, I think the, part of the, I don't want to say confusion because that's not what it is. We know that other districts have put out their plans, we know that other districts are waiting much later to put out their plans. And so, there's not really any one template, for lack of a better word, about how this is supposed to go forward. You know, we discussed, Superintendent Jean and I discussed putting in a special session so we didn't have to wait until the 18th because we felt like that folks might feel like that was too long to wait before the board approved a plan. And so, that was the suggestion to put this meeting in. So that's just sort of where that's, where that's coming from. Director Workman?
Yes, thank you. Since this is coming out on a Friday, I would anticipate that many of us might be getting some phone calls over the weekend or emails. And I would just like to remind the public that at this point, the board has not made a decision, even though there will be more information on Friday. I know that I and my colleagues always consider all of the information that's presented to us before we make a decision. So, just to reiterate, it's not, it's not a decision that anybody's hiding, but that there will be more discussion and hopefully a vote on it on Monday.
Director Nathan, do you have something else?
I do.
Okay, and then I'm gonna go to Director Barlow. So, Director Nathan and then Director Barlow.
Okay, sorry. Superintendent, the reason I asked the question is that I wanted to get a sense of the type of preparation that we should do. For example, everybody will have the plan on Friday. Should we expect a presentation and a question and answer session at the meeting on Monday? Or should we send our questions to you ahead of time? I'm just sort of looking for process.
Well, I think we follow our traditional protocol that submit your questions to us in advance if you have them, if you don't, then, you know, we'll take them that night. I guess I'll, I'll remind the board that as you're looking at whatever we decide, keep your governor's hat on. I hope we aren't having a lot of conversation about, well, is it Monday, Tuesday, or should it be Thursday, Friday, or should it be Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday? To me, that's more of a management-type decision, but what types of information do you need as a board member, as a governing board member, to be comfortable with approving whatever recommendation that is brought to you on Monday night?
to us on Friday. We do have the basic three models, you know, with potential for some minor adjustments here or there. So, I would encourage board members to begin, if there are questions, begin constructing those questions now, not waiting till then. I mean, you know, I think we can get a jump on this because there aren't gonna be three other different or three new options. I think we pretty much know where things are and I would encourage us to, you know, begin that process now.
Thank you, Director Barlow. Director Workman, do you have something else?
I am gonna move us on then, seeing no other hands raised. 5.02 bell time study, this is an information item. Superintendent?
Yes, I'm gonna turn this over to Scott Sheridan, Executive Director of Operations. As he gets set up and ready to share his screen, I just want to remind the board where we're at. I think I got a question earlier about this. Yes, it is the same three, the same slides we used, I think, back in February, I think it was, when we presented, the team, bell time study team presented three different options for you. So that, those are the exact same slides we used in February. What is new is the surveys that you asked us to do. I think you asked us to go out and talk to middle school staff about losing 10 minutes of instruction time, you asked us to talk about, ask parents, elementary parents about an 8 o'clock start, and elementary teachers about a late, you know, the 4 o'clock end time. So Scott is gonna share, gonna start off by sharing the results of the survey. The only other thing, I think, we did receive a question about, we were asked to talk to somebody at Mayo about, or get some research on start times for elementary students. So we did put that one document that we were able to find in board docs for you. But just gonna, I know it's been several months since we talked about this, I think it was February, but Scott's gonna go over the results of the surveys that we were asked to do and then review the three options that were presented to you previously. Scott?
Thank you, good evening, board members. Can you see the screen okay?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. I just want to do a quick review of where this all started. This started back in February of 2019, so we've been at this for about a year and a half now. And back in 2019, we formed a 15-member group, or a variety of staff members within the district, to review and plan, see what kind of options we could come up with. We met 10 times over the following months and brought a couple options to the board in November of 2019. We got some feedback from the board, so we went back out, we did a thought exchange, we did a community meeting, then we came back and did a study session with the board in February, with the results of all those, took some more information back or input from the board after that, created some options based on parameters regarding potential funding and the cost that you would be able to tolerate for, particularly the busing piece of it all. Came back on February 18th at a staff meeting and got some more input back from the board as well. We presented some options at that time, and those are the options that the superintendent was talking about, that I'll show later. Out of the meeting on the 18th, you asked us to get some information or do a survey of parents, staff, that would be affected by an earlier start time for the elementary. And so we did go out and do a Survey Monkey for the bell time survey. First slide that you're seeing here is the results from the elementary staff. The elementary school staff, obviously, those are the people that work on a daily basis with the students, have the firsthand knowledge of what they see, the positives and negatives of the start times. And so obviously, it was imperative that we talk with them and get a survey from them, which we did. And the first question was about the 4:00 PM dismissal time that was proposed in a couple of our options. And the vast majority, over 80%, about 85% of the staff felt that that was too late of a dismissal for the elementary students. The other question we asked them was to, if they believed a 9:45 start time was too late for the students, and again, a vast majority, again, 85%, felt that that 9:45 start time was too late for the students. And then we asked the question about the 8:00 AM start time, because that was one of the options that we were considering in order to make this work. If we start the elementary earlier, around 8:00 AM, then we could start the high school, middle school between 8:45 and 9 o'clock. But we wanted to know what their thoughts were on the effect of, on their students if we did that 8:00 AM start. And again, 79, about 78.5%, I believe it was, about 79% felt that it's not too early to start at 8 o'clock in the morning for the elementary school students. So that was the results of, oh, I'm sorry, there's one more question. And this was kind of a more difficult question for the staff to answer, but, so we got a wide variety of answers to this question about the percentage of students in the class who are cared for by older siblings or students after school. This was an important factor to consider, primarily because if the elementary starts earlier, they get out earlier, they go home, and who's there to care for them after school because the middle school, high school students would still be in school potentially and wouldn't be available to care for them. So we had some findings there. A lot of it, they just didn't know, over 50%. But this is a result of the elementary staff survey. So I'm gonna switch over to, hopefully, can you see this screen? Or did you lose the screen?
No, we can see it.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I lost it, sorry. The one I'm looking at is the middle school staff, is that the one you can see?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And so we also did the survey with the middle school staff, and what the questions surrounding this had to do with, in order to make this plan work, we would have to reduce the middle school day by about 10 minutes, and we wanted- And we wanted to know what the instructional staff and staff at the middle school thought the effect of that would be, if it would have a significant negative impact on student learning. And as you can see, the, about 68% of the staff did not feel that the loss of that 10-minute per day instructional time would have a negative impact on student learning. And that was the only question we asked the middle school staff. Are you able to now see the elementary school parent guardian feedback?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay. And so this is the big one, the parent and guardian feedback. Wanted to ask them if we did change the elementary time to an 8:00 a.m. start, the concerns would affect their family. We've got a wide variety of responses, as you can see. Some of the responses that they were able to respond to, if it would make childcare more difficult for them, if they were concerned about the loss of sleep for their elementary-age student, the safety aspect, that we felt, or I felt, related mainly to those that might have to stand at a bell, or at a bus stop, and it potentially, the sun might just be coming up, or it might even still be dark, or the earlier ones. And the effect of the transportation on the elementary students, if that affected their, sometimes they have their high school-age students arrive, their younger siblings to school, if that would have an effect on them, or if there was other transportation issue as far as dropping their student off. For the majority of the parents, they did respond, over 65% did not have a concern at all about the 8:00 a.m. start, or that any of the effects that it might have on their family. The next question was about the elementary start time, again, at 8:00, and if these benefits directly affect your family, and check all that apply. They had several options, again, to choose from. And one, the question about better matches their child's schedule, that has to do with their sleep schedule, better matches the parent's work schedule, makes childcare less difficult, the safety aspect, again, they responded to, transportation less difficult, no benefits at all. Again, you get a wide variety of responses, percentage of responses to these, this particular question as well. And question three, if we were to start elementary school later and dismiss at around 4:00, would any of these concerns directly affect your family? Check all that apply. Again, a wide variety of responses, the childcare would be more difficult, lower than 20% responded to that. It's too late to be dismissed, that was about a 37%. Safety was a concern, again, transportation, again, and, but about 48% had no concerns at all with that dismissal around 4:00 p.m. And question four is if we were to start later and dismiss at around 4:00 p.m., would any of these benefits directly affect your family? Check all that apply. And again, does it better match the parent work schedule, childcare less difficult, safety, transportation less difficult? But the vast majority had no benefit. They checked no benefit, about 66% claimed that there was no benefit on there. So those are the survey results that came back. The next thing I'll put up on the screen is, hopefully, the presentation as far as the PowerPoint. Can you see that now? Bell time options?
Yes.
Thank you. And what this is, is just a highlight of what was presented back in February, February 18th, regarding some options that were presented for later high school start time. The first option, A, was the high school start time at 8:20. Had no effect really on the elementary school, except for about a 15-minute later dismissal. And these were just some periods, options that were created by some of the high school principals. These are just options, there's nothing said in stone, obviously, but just options that considered with the three-period lunch. Middle school came up with potential schedules using the 8:05 start time. And then option B, again, was the high school starting at 8:20 with a 3:30 dismissal time with a shorter lunch, a 35 or 36-minute lunch. And those were the options that were presented at the school board on February 18th. So I think we're looking, this is an information item, obviously, and we're just looking for some more input. I know it's a lot to absorb with the survey results, but we're certainly looking for your feedback. I believe our intent is to, as we get, have another meeting with the bell time study committee, once we get the input from the board tonight, try to plan out some other potential options and bring them back to the board at a future date.
Thank you, Mr. Sheridan. I see lots of hands raised, so you're going to get some questions, which is why you're here and what you're good at. So I'm going to start with Director Barlow.
Thank you. First of all, Scott, thanks a lot for responding to our concerns. And not that I would expect you to be able to answer now, but it would be great if you could. Just the percentage of respondents, if you will, as it may relate to elementary staff surveys, there were 448 respondents to the elementary staff. What percentage of the staff actually participated? The same thing, same question would be true for the middle school as well. Just curious, more so than anything. And then finally, I was curious about, well, in light of, you know, COVID-19, and we're, it seems like this bell time study is kind of being presented at a odd time, you know, given where we are, what issues are before us. I know you have no control over that, you're simply responding to that which we had asked of the cabinet earlier. And I appreciate that, but I guess this is more of a reflection point that I wanted to put out there. And thank you for the hard work.
Sure. Regarding the percentage questions you have, I am not sure, Director Barlow. I can certainly find out that information and get back to you unless Human Resources, Carl Bach, and has that information off the top of his head. I'm sorry, I don't know that number, but we can certainly get that to you. And as far as presenting it now, we feel that it's going to take a good year, because we want to provide enough in advance to our parents and families so that they can plan for it, for the potential of implementing it in the following fall. And so the sooner that we can come up with a plan, if we are making any changes at all, this is the time to do it. I know with everything else going on, it's not maybe at the highest priority level, but it is more of a timely issue, because, like I said, we do want to provide our parents the opportunity to absorb it, make adjustments and changes as necessary by giving them enough, giving them the proposal in advance.
Yeah, and if I may, Madam Chair, just as a follow-up, and I appreciate the advance notice for parental response and anticipation preparation. So then we have this perfect, I don't want to call it storm, but perfect coming together plan, scheduled events to include the possibility of boundary changes, you know, things like that, too, that the parents are going to be asked to take on a whole lot. Not that our community isn't fully capable of doing that, but I think that as long as we're able to keep everything in the right solo, so to speak, silo, rather, you know, bell time study, okay, potential factor guarding, this or that. I just appreciate the complexities which exist, and I think the community can potentially value even that much more. It's elected officials, board members, and cabinet superintendent. There's a lot of moving parts that sometimes everyone's not aware of. And I appreciate the fact that we're able to have these open discussions at the fairs, if you will, clearly, of the issues before our public, and allows us to have these open conversations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Director Schlusner, and then Director Amundson.
Thank you. So if we go back to the last informational meeting before the presentation, that was to the board on August timeline that you presented there, Scott, I think there were a couple of options that were presented at that time that actually do address and handle some of these concerns. So I'd encourage revisiting some of the prior options that never made it to the final recommendation, because I do think they would work. I specifically remember a cost-neutral one that was really close as well.
If I could ask a question, Director Schlusner, are you talking about the high school around that 8:20 start time, again, by keeping the elementary afterwards? That was a cost neutral or a flip-flop that you remember?
The flip-flop, the elementary was earlier, and I know that's where a lot of the staff's concerns were, but I think the survey results would share otherwise, or say otherwise.
Okay. Yeah, we can revisit that. We did, like you said, present an option of an 8:00 a.m. elementary start, and they would get out at 2:25.
Yep.
High school would start at 8:45 with a 3:15, but my notes here in my PowerPoint, I believe that one did cost, had some cost to it, about a half million dollars, so about 10 routes. But we can look at it again and try to adjust that and tweak that a little bit to reduce the costs of it.
That's good. Thanks, Scott.
Director Amundson, and then Director Nathan.
I wanted to say thank you for including the article on the effects of an earlier time on elementary students. I was thinking how lucky we are to have experts right here in our community that came and spoke to us about the adolescents. And I wonder if there would be an opportunity to have those same people weigh in on the effects on elementary students, just to reassure us that beyond the one study, this is something that the professionals would either recommend or at least not have any significance concerns about. So that would be something I would suggest in terms of you asked for additional feedback before we move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Kathy?
So thank you, Scott, for those survey results. You know, as I look at them, I agree with Mr. Schlusner that, looking back at some of the previous options, where we did have a elementary start time that was earlier than the middle school and high school, would be appropriate. I think at the last time we were together, we said that, we have said that a parameter all along was the cost, but I think at the last time we were talking about options, we said that cost continued to be a parameter, but we hadn't yet hit on that number beyond which we were saying, hold on. So I think full transparency, give us the good news and the bad news, I would say, in looking at any additional options, especially as they respond to the results of the survey about an earlier elementary start time. And then the only other pieces is I went back and listened to that February meeting. I think there was a conversation not just on the effect on elementary students' sleep, which is what this article was about, but also what are the effects on elementary students' learning? I know we asked the teachers what they thought, if learning was affected. But I did a little research, and there is some research in the literature about the impact of earlier start times on learning. Unfortunately, it's not as developed as it is for teens. But with the permission of the chair, is that information that I'd be able to share with the rest of the board, with Mr. Sheridan? Not tonight, but in email. Okay, so I'll share that information. Thanks.
Thank you.
Other questions, board members?
Scott, you want to unshare your screen?
Oh, sure. There. Sorry.
I would also add, Deborah, just the information that Kathy's going to share, the next time we come back and present, we will have that information in Board Docs that can be available to the public as well.
Okay, I don't have a question for you, Mr. Sheridan. Thank you for the information. I do, I just have a rumination as I look, you know, with appreciation on the surveys that you've given us. I guess this is more to my colleagues about, as we consider a decision, not tonight, but going forward, you know, think about how we're going to make that decision. And, you know, we value so many things in education, right? And I see that, you know, this really was, this discussion was really born out of need to address some things with our older students, mental health, academics, those sorts of things. But, you know, we know that the, what I call the family schedule has sort of crept into the, the impact on family scheduling and family, families has crept into the discussion. And so just some thoughts that we'll have to think about that going forward. If we don't have a clear answer, there's probably not one schedule that's going to rise up to meet all those needs. You know, how are we going to make that, make a decision to change our bell time if that's what we want to do? I see Superintendent, and we'll go to Superintendent next.
Yeah, Deborah, this is not related to this agenda item, so if there's more questions about that, but we, I failed to, after consent was approved, I didn't get to acknowledge retirees.
Director Nathan, sorry, juggling again.
Mr. Sheridan, I just want to put a timeframe in context, just see if what we've talked about before is still relevant. So the last time we talked about this, it was in February, and there was some question about when the decision needed to be made. And we were told that February is a key date, because that's when SAC starts putting out registration for the fall, and the school's start times are essential to knowing when, for example, before and after care is going to be needed. So if we were to look to do this for the 2021 school year at the earliest, would we have to, again, have a decision before February?
I could let Amy weigh in on that, but I don't believe that has changed what you were saying as far as when those notifications go out for SAC.
This is Amy, that's correct. I don't know that it's absolutely critical, but it definitely helps us, especially with a potential change of this size.
So that helps us to define the timeframe in which we may have to make this decision? Or were you, Mr. Sheridan, were you looking for an earlier deadline?
My personal preference, of course, would be an earlier deadline, just to allow the families to adjust and have more time to adjust to it. families to adjust and have more time to adjust to it. I don't know when vacations have to be put in for, by certain families or work schedules have to be put in or contracts signed by individual parents in order for timeframes for when they start and finish work. So I just think the sooner that we could do it, I was just kind of ballparking a year, a year prior would be very helpful to them.
Okay.
Thank you.
So what, what I hear, Mr. Sheridan, is that after this meeting and a few, some feedback, and I see there's at least one more hand up, it really sort of goes back into your hands in terms of meeting with the bell time study and then coming back to us. So you, I feel like you will be in control of the next part of the schedule, which I, which sounds great to me. So, thank you. Director Workman, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I guess you just touched on, on the question that I have is it seems that we, we sort of get into the habit of, well, it's going to come back sometime or when and then nobody's, I shouldn't say nobody, it's, it's, I, it would be really great if we could sort of have a calendar. So if, if Scott could work backwards from the date that he would like in terms of, you know, you said a year out, so if you're, well, we're in August right now, right? So maybe before the end of the calendar year, if you could say, you know, this is when you would like to have a board vote on it and then back it up from that and say, this is when additional information will be given. Maybe we need another study session. I hope not, but if we do, we do, so that we really have that mapped out from, like I said, from when you want us to make a decision and moving backwards in time. I think that would be really helpful for me. And I know that you are very keenly aware of how important timelines are because of your position in the district. So I have the utmost confidence that this will be something that you will be able to convey to us. So thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I believe it's important that I bring this back to my fellow cabinet members and we have this discussion to establish that timeline. So they have their input, which is very important as well, into that timeline.
Anything else for Mr. Sheridan on the bell time?
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I am going to do two additional things. I'm going to, I don't know what to call it, take a point of personal privilege and ask Mr. Munoz to announce our retirements, which we forgot earlier.
Yes, thank you. First of all, teacher retirement, we have Jane Williams. She's a third grade teacher at Bishop Elementary, retirement effective the end of the day, June 3rd, 2020, been with the district 33 years. Clerical retirement, Leanne Furness, technical secretary at Northrop Community Education Center, retirement effective at the end of the day, July 31, 2020, been with the district 10 years. And the non-schedule retirement, Joanne Small, licensed practical nurse at non-public schools, retirement effective the end of the day, July 31st, 2020, been with the district four years. We thank these three individuals for their service to the district.
Thank you, Superintendent, and apologies to our retirees who we just missed going forward. Now, board members, I move to go into recess, not recess, I move to, well, it says recess. I move to take a break for 10 minutes. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second, Workman.
Thank you. Do we have to have a roll call vote to go into recess? Probably not.
You have the authority.
I wield the gavel. We are in recess at 5:56 PM. I will see you back here in 10 minutes. Reconvened at 6:08 PM.
All right. Thank you. 5.03, Fidel process. This is an information item. Superintendent Munoz.
Yes, I will be sharing some slides here in just a minute. Deborah asked me to provide some additional information about Fidel, recommendation that was made a few months ago. So let me get started here. All right. So just a reminder, I shared this with you at a previous meeting, Task Force recommendation, all three options from the Task Force, which was given on October 16th, 2018, recommended closing of Fidel to reduce operating costs and to ensure gifted and telling that programming existed at each middle school. And number 27th, 2018, discussion of the survey question has Fidel listed as being a repurposed district survey by school perception, did not mention Fidel. If you remember, that was the survey we did to test the tax tolerance of our voters. Review and comment that was submitted did not mention Fidel. And current best value repurposed of rail and the gymnastics. This move allows Right Fit to be back into the rail space and results in a reduction in less costs and operating costs by consolidating of functions, provide space for district-wide gymnastics that currently we are leasing and it's not a very good place. And the owners would really appreciate us getting out of there so they can use it for their community center and retain the repurpose the pools at the three middle schools. So that's the recommendations of the Task Force. I shared with you at a previous meeting, repurpose of the building. As I mentioned, we need a gymnastics center. Unfortunately, the conversation that night turned more on, we want to repurpose it just for a gymnastics gym, that's part of it. The other part is that we want to move rail or middle school Right Fit into the Fidel building. If we move rail into Fidel, we would move out of the Boys and Girls Club and where Right Foot, Right Fit currently exists. Or we could move Middle School Right Fit into Fidel and leave rail at remaining ESC building. I shared with you earlier, the operating cost, if we move Middle School Right Fit, we spend a little over $140,000 for administrator of that program since it's in a different building. And our current lease for the Boys and Girls Club is a little over $60,000 annually for that space that we rent. We also, John figured out the savings on transportation. Currently, Fidel costs 492,000, a little over 492,000 per year to serve the 436 regular riders to Fidel. The average Fidel student cost is a little over $1,000 per year to transport and the average general education student in Rochester, other schools, costs 494 per year to transport. Other advantages of repurposing the Fidel building, it, it ends the practice of self-selected segregation, it's not needed for the middle school capacity and the HG program would be continued in each middle school. The advantages of the current Fidel, it does provide that small middle school option for families. Disadvantage of the current Fidel space, it, it doesn't have experiential space for that type of learning, small student support office nurse space, it's difficult to give the middle school students, they're the true middle school experience. They share the auditorium, music gym, cafeteria space, parking and traffic flow is a challenge there and a lack of green space. Deborah asked me to, to share some of the discipline data. This is the level two referrals for the three years. You see, the first column is the general ed or the small middle school portion of the Fidel building. And then the middle column is the highly gifted portion of the building. And then the right column is the total number of referrals over those three years for the entire building. Now, if we look at discipline data and break it down by those students who qualify for free and reduced lunch, you see the data there for the three years. Here's the EL, EL students referrals and special ed level two referrals during those three years. Fidel, whoops, went back. Okay, the highly gifted waiting list. You see, here's the waiting list for the last three years. And I guess, to be honest, really waiting list is probably not the proof yet title for this, this data. These are students who qualified but did not choose to enroll into the highly gifted program. And some of that had to do with when we started, a few years ago, when we started the program at Kellogg. If they were not drawn for the Fidel building, they chose not to enter the highly gifted program because they weren't able to get the Fidel location. We were also asked to share the waitlist for the general portion of the Fidel building. So you see that broken down by grade levels. And the first column shows you the total number of applications that were drawn over the two-year period. And then on the right-hand column are the ones that were not able to get into that program. Here's the enrollment data for the last three years. Column one is, is the count, percentage and of the highly gifted program. And then the columns to the right are the non-highly gifted program and enrollment and percentage of enrollment over the past three years. And then here's the free and reduced priced lunch student enrollment over a three-year period of time. First column is the overall total percentage of Fidel, combining both groups of students. Then you have the highly gifted program. So for example, in the 1920 year, 7.5% of the highly gifted students qualified for free and reduced lunch compared to 34.9% of students in the not highly gifted program, excuse me, 19.1% in the non, not highly gifted. And then the right-hand column is the district percentages at that time. And then down below there, you see what the other middle schools' free and reduced percentage was this past school year. John Adams was 45%, Kellogg 29%, and Willow Creek was 45%. EL enrollment for the last three years, first column is the total percentage of Fidel as, as the building. Next one is, there were 0% EL students in the highly gifted program during those three years. And then you see the percentage of those students not in the highly gifted program that were EL students over the three years. And then the district averages on the right. And then down below, you see the percentages of EL students in the other three middle schools. Then we, the same data here again for special education. First column is your total special education enrollment of the entire Fidel building. Next column is your highly gifted program. And then the next one is your not highly gifted program. And then the column to the right is the district averages. And then down below, you see the special ed percentages of the other three middle schools. And then broken down by ethnicity, you see the top column is our district averages and then the next, the second column is the Fidel total building. Third column is the ethnicity for the highly gifted program. And then the last column would be for the non-highly gifted program at Fidel, the ethnicity. And so that's that as of the October 1st, 2019 enrollment. Then asked to share achievement data, the first slide we have here is the MCA math scores. I do want to remind the board that we, because of the pandemic, we were told by the state not to give the MCAs this past spring. So this is, that's why the 1920 school year data is not available. So very similar, same order here. First column is Fidel as, as a building. Next column is your MCA scores by the highly gifted students. Next column is the percentages proficiency of the not highly gifted program. And then column to the right is the district percentages. Same thing for reading. And then here's achievement data by free and reduced. First column is free and reduced percentage, same order, district. Fidel is a whole building, highly gifted Fidel and non-highly gifted program is the bottom column. Where you see the NAs, that is because the number of students in that subgroup is so low that they do, they do not record a percentage, so they don't identify, may potentially identify a student. So that's what the NA stands for. And then the right-hand column is your special ed MCA scores. Same thing for reading, same order. And then here it is by ethnicity. Top column is our district percentages for math. Next column is Fidel as an entire building. Next column is just the highly gifted portion of Fidel. Last bottom column is the non-highly gifted program at Fidel. And then the same, same setup, but for reading. The only other thing I would like to talk about is that a little bit, there were some questions about why we were bringing Fidel up at that time when we did. And it really has to do with the timeline. If you, if, I want to remind the board that we made a commitment to the community that a year before the new schools open up, that we would announce the boundaries. And so what that means is this coming fall or this coming school year, we need to start beginning to work on boundaries so we can have them completed, have input sessions on those boundaries and have them all approved by the board by, by next, the fall of '21. This is one of many questions that we're going to ask the board to approve. So we can start working on those boundaries. Fidel is the first one. Later on, we would like to bring the discussion, if you remember, the Task Force also recommended moving the Montessori program out of Franklin to create more capacity in the southeast part of our city and move that program into the Hoover Building and then convert Churchill into a K-5 walk-only school. And so this is an order of many decisions that we would like the board to make so we can have all those finalized so we can begin working on boundaries as soon as possible this, this coming school year. So that's, this time I'll answer any questions.
Thank you, Superintendent. Board members, as Mike referenced, these were some of the things I asked for and it wasn't necessary that I was asking personally. I was, I was sort of trying to catch some of the concepts and themes that had been talked about in our discussions over the past X amount of time, things that folks wanted to look at. So I thought this was a good first attempt to kind of look at some data in terms of making a decision. Is there anybody who has any immediate comments? Looks like Director Amundson. Go ahead.
Thank you. So there is a slide, I just scrolled away from it so I can't tell you which slide, but it, it references the term self-segregating. I'm curious as to why that term was chosen and if it's based on ethnicity segregation or some other factor. And then I have a follow-up question to that.
Yeah, I would think we would probably make that same comment about any of our district-wide options. I think for, for many reasons. One, because many of our underrepresented students and families, one, may not have access to the information, even though we make every effort to inform them of our district-wide options. The other is we have some families who feel they're not, that's not a program for them. The other is, we have some families who feel they're not, that's not a program for them. They would not be accepted in that program. So I think that statement was more, not so much just Fidel. But I think, you know, if we truly want to look at our equity work, we probably should have a serious conversation about all of our district-wide option schools, and what type of segregation that could potentially create. So I guess it wasn't just singling just Fidel. But since we're just talking about that district-wide option school right now, that's why it was used. But we would, we would use that statement for probably all of our district-wide option schools.
And again, so was that based on ethnicity or all of them?
I, I would, I would say ethnicity and poverty. I just think when you have schools like that, it does, for some families and some cultures, it does send a message that this is not for you. And I'm not saying it's intended to do that, and people are intentionally doing things like that. But I think just because of what's going on in our society, that, that gets created when you do things like that.
Sure, so I, I would echo, echo what you said about having a conversation about district-wide options as a, as a whole. I think that would have to take place, though, before this kind of decision were made. It seems to me if the ethnicity data is within 11% between district and Fidel for minority. And you said probably a lot of the choice, district-wide option programs are like that. I'm wondering whether there are any non-district-wide option or neighborhood schools that are also within that 11% range, and whether it's fair to single out based on that number. I don't have access to that data, but.
Yeah, I, I think we, we would probably have a school or two that would be similar percentages. But I think the difference is, that's based on the neighborhood. That we didn't create the neighborhoods. But a district-wide option is something that we as a district created. And whereas if all schools are based strictly on neighborhoods, I think that's different than when you have a school that's like a district-wide option program, that's a lottery self-select type program.
Director Nathan.
So I want to build on the conversation about the phrase self-selected segregation. For reference, I was responsible for the marketing of a district-wide option school for about 10 years. And I worked very hard to distribute the information across the district to as many families as possible. And I, while I agree with the Superintendent's concern that there are many families who may not have equal access to the information, I'm concerned about casting a conclusion about the intention of those families who apply to and choose to attend district-wide options. The only reason being self-segregation. Without asking these families that that was the reason, or if it has to do with the qualities of the school. And later on, I'll have some questions about the achievement data at Fidel. Because if I saw this achievement data for Fidel as a member of a minority group, I would say they're doing something special to get these kinds of achievement scores for these underrepresented populations that are higher than what we're seeing for those populations at other schools. So if we're going to have a conversation about district-wide options and what people's perceptions are, let's make sure that we have actual data and not perception. And secondly, there are many ways that we could decide to make these district-wide option schools more available across the district. We could put everybody in the lottery. You wouldn't have to submit an application. And then if you're chosen, you have the choice to choose whether to go to that school. So it's not a matter of having access to the application or understanding that there's a deadline. We have choices as a district to make these schools more available. Because it's not about the racial makeup of the school. It's about the philosophy and the approach to delivering our district curriculum that these schools have worked for years to come together and deliver a high-quality product. Just like our neighborhood schools come together and they choose ways to deliver our district curriculum so that there's a high-quality product. I have said it every single time I gave a tour of Lincoln. Anywhere you live in Rochester, you are lucky to be able to go to any neighborhood or any district-wide option school, because the quality of our schools across the board are outstanding. But to be able to give parents an option of a delivery of teaching and learning that in their minds might fit better with the way their children learn, has been an important component of this district. So if we're going to look at district-wide options, and whether we should change our approach in the future, let's do it based on facts and not on assumptions about what people's choices are.
Yeah, I, I agree Kathy. And I guess I, that's why I made the statement that I think it really has nothing to do with how much efforts put into marketing. I can tell you from my own personal experience as a person of color, there's been times that I've been told, we welcome you, but I didn't feel welcome there. So I, I guess I'm not stating that we intentionally did things to show that they're not welcome there. But I think because of some individuals' experiences in our society, that's the feeling they get. No matter what you would say to me and tell me, you're welcome here, I, I don't feel that. And so I guess I wasn't trying to criticize that schools are doing something intentionally to make that happen. But some of our students and families just don't feel that's the right fit for me. And it could be based on some other experience they had in our, in our community or in society that makes them feel that way, no matter what we tell them and, and try to encourage them to, to pursue it. I do know, sitting at the table at, I know I always call it kindergarten roundup, but it's not called kindergarten roundup. And, but I've sat at the district-wide option table for the last two years, two years when we did that. And I don't remember ever seeing one parent filling out an application for just one of the district-wide option schools. They signed up for all of them. And we do everything we can to market all of our schools. And I agree with you Kathy, that even, all of our schools, neighborhood or district-wide, do an awesome job. But for some reason, in our community, there was some communication going out or belief that I have to get into one of the district-wide option schools. So that's why I sign up for every one of them and hope that I get in. And I've also, over the years, realized that when it comes down to after they've done sibling preference, there's really very few openings in our district-wide option schools after you've done that sibling preference first, to actually draw new families into, into the district-wide schools.
Thanks Mike. Director Barlow.
Thank you Director Seelinger. Where to begin? I think this is a very timely discussion. It's unfortunate that, I say unfortunate, Fidel happens to be the school or program, well, school that we're speaking of. But, and everyone's experience is different, but there's a truth. And, and I wouldn't necessarily expect, and I applaud the Superintendent in being able to speak to experiences that he's encountered. And, and as a parent of two daughters who have graduated from Rochester Public Schools and, and who were neither encouraged and on occasion discouraged from participating in a HG program or AP course that they qualified for, I can say as a matter of fact that there are individuals who feel this way. Even more recently, the Youth Commission sponsored an event, first part of this year, where I spoke with a graduating senior from Mayo, who, who shared her experience as a elementary student at, at the Sunset Terrace, wanting to, you know, being qualified for, but being discouraged. And I guess I'm just speaking to, I'm not offended by the use of the term self-selected segregation. It is a sociological truth and reality. It is part of the system that is systemic. And I think it behooves us to minimally acknowledge versus aggressively defending. Because we just continue perpetrating, perhaps potentially, a, a truth that is real to some, if not certainly, if it's just a few even. I agree with Director Nathan. Something special must be happening when you look at the reading and math scores, and you see 100% for students of color. Something is going on there. Though the numbers are few, the percentages are high for students not of color who are able to benefit. And, and I guess I would also acknowledge, it's just something that may exist. And what I heard was an opportunity to create opportunities beyond, if you will, the footprint of Fidel Middle School. An opportunity for perhaps that model, and we've discussed this before, being transferable into other locations, the HG program, telling no one new. I mean, it's existing at other middle schools. And even in terms of, there were those who had the opportunity to fully participate in an HG program, but chose not to because it was not at Fidel. So that would maybe suggest something, I don't know. I didn't survey the parents, nor do I believe any of the other board members did either. But I just take exception, am concerned when I hear the suggestion that, well, maybe not, maybe this. When, again, there's a reality that is lived, that is experienced, that is heard, that would truly say there are those who have not felt either welcomed or encouraged or of the opinion that they would be supportive if indeed they were fortunate enough to get a winning lottery number. And that's all saying that at this point. Thank you.
Thank you Director Barlow. Director Marvin.
Thank you. It seems to me right now we have two different discussions going on. One is about whether this district should provide distinctly different delivery options at our middle schools, high schools, whatever. Or should we provide the kind of diverse inclusive delivery models at all of our middle schools and high schools? So should it be a decision that parents need to make about what school will best fit my child's needs and, and gifts? Or should we really look at providing those kind of options at all of our schools? We've already determined that all of our middle schools should provide highly gifted programs. So there's that about, do we need options, district-wide options at middle schools? And right now, what we're trying to determine is what do we do with Fidel? So I'm, I'm hoping that short-term, we can sort of tease out what's the future for Fidel in the next one to three years. And bigger discussion, district-wide options, district-wide. Do we need parents to determine where their child will go? Or do we determine it doesn't matter? Because whoever your child is and what they need going forward, we'll, we'll provide that regardless. And so race and resources and connection shouldn't matter. But right now, I think we got to focus on short-term, Fidel, what do we do with that?
Thank you Director Marvin. Director Workman, and then Amundson.
I, I really understand what Gina's going with this. But I guess my concern is, rather than saying there aren't enough students who are in our district-wide options, or specifically in this case Fidel, the best thing for, to do for those students of color who are actually succeeding at Fidel is to take that option away, which makes no sense to me. We've talked about let's duplicate what's happening at Fidel in the middle schools. I haven't seen this happening. I mean, we, there's a lot of discussion about the gifted or, and the highly gifted programs that we have. But we have a lot of general education students at Fidel who are choosing that option for a reason. And I think we need to have a wider discussion on this. And until we do, I do not see how we can make a decision. I can't make a decision, I, I know we're not making a decision tonight. But I don't feel fully informed enough to be able to say, yeah, let's, let's get rid of Fidel. And we'll try to recreate those, those experiences other where. There's no, there's nothing holding us back from trying to create those experiences in those situations in our current middle schools. We don't have to wait until Fidel is closed to do that. So my recommendation would be focus on that and somehow make a better effort at drawing in some of our, more of our students of color. I, I know there's, I, I understand, I can't fully appreciate Mike when you, where you're coming from, because obviously I'm not a person of color. But at the same time, I think we have to really figure out how, how do we involve more people? I really liked Kathy's idea earlier of putting everybody in a lottery, in the district-wide lottery. And then if they choose they don't want to do it, then they don't. It's an interesting idea and something that hadn't occurred to me. And I'd have to think about it for, you know, give it some serious thought for a while before weighing in anymore on that. But I find that very intriguing.
Director Amundson, and then Director Nathan.
Thank you. Director Workman just expressed some of the same things that I was going to put forward. And one of them is how much I thank Superintendent Munoz and Director Barlow for sharing their experiences as a person of color. Because I'm unable to know those things unless somebody who has experienced it themselves shares it with me. And along those lines, we're, we're talking about Fidel, but we're really talking about choice programs in general, district-wide options in general, sorry. I've been here for a long time and I'm used to calling them choice programs. District-wide options in general. And if what I'm hearing is that there's a pervasive belief or feeling that certain groups may not feel welcome, you know, there's certainly, I think, I'm sure I speak for the entire district in saying that they are welcome. But if there is any kind of a feeling that is deeply, deeply disturbing and saddens me greatly. So without, without Fidel in the mix, if we are to have a larger discussion about district-wide options, or even if we, we decide not to have that discussion, I I think it would be of utmost importance to contact families and find out whether or not that is a pervasive belief and immediately address what we can do to rectify that. It was a number of years ago that my, my kids were at Fridel, and I don't know what the numbers were at that time, but Fridel had a very richly diverse population at the time. My, my children benefit, benefit from, still to this day, the relationships with students of multiple backgrounds that they met at Fridel. So I, I, that, that does deeply concern me. I think it would be worth looking more deeply into that. And I think it would be important to engage families directly to talk about whether they do or do not feel welcome in all of our district-wide option programs, and to discuss with them what can be done to change that.
Director Nathan, then Barlow.
Thank you, Chair Sehlinger. So to kind of bring the conversation back to what Director Marvin said about Fridel, because that's the, the name of the agenda item. From the information that the superintendent has provided, it looks like the Fridel building would be a great space for these other educational programs that have not really had a solid home. Aside from the cost savings, I absolutely can see the benefit of all of those programs having a building. And Fridel is, is one of the ones where, you know, there's, there's a flexibility. But if we're gonna talk about, as I've watched this conversation through time, and both before I was on the board and after, one of my frustrations is I really felt like everything kept getting mixed together. So I just, I just want to make sure I've, I've got it clear that the highly gifted program is going to be offered at all of our middle schools, including our new one. I think that's been clearly established. The district-wide option, as Fridel describes themselves, smaller middle school, is the program that we're talking about. And what I've heard from the parents who have written in or have made public comments, they're not tied to the building, right? They're tied to the programming. And I was, I'll be honest, I was a little concerned when I saw the PowerPoint and that the only advantage of Fridel was the small middle school option. And the disadvantages of the current Fridel space were outlined. But from what I hear about the people who attend Fridel, and the staff, both current and past, they don't see any of those disadvantages that you list, as having disadvantaged them in how successful they were at Fridel, or what Fridel launched them into, into high school. So I would like to talk about the Fridel program, independent of the building, because we are building a new middle school. We are, right now, reinventing education in the time of COVID. And I would feel comfortable having a conversation about the future of the Fridel program if I knew that we were talking about a plan to figure out how to take the advantages of Fridel, which I think are more than just a small middle school option. I think it shows in the achievement data. And I think it shows in the stories that you hear about the Fridel community. How are we going to infuse that into the rest of the middle schools? Because we hear success stories from the middle school, but we don't see that same kind of record of academic success and sense of community at the other middle schools. One of the options that our, our architect said is, we can separate our new middle school into pods, and we can have four small communities that are almost like independent middle schools in the same building. I haven't heard whether that's even on the table. I haven't heard if, if we're building a brand-new middle school based on what our current middle school staff told us they would like to see, because maybe it's not currently working in their middle school. Well, that's great for the new middle school, but what are we doing for the current middle schools to help them improve their situation? So I feel better ending a program that is specifically tied to the concept of small community building and shows academic success, if I knew we were gonna figure out a way to bring that to the rest of our middle schools. So I guess the question in that is, is that even on the table? Or are we just talking about, we need this building, we're closing this program, and we're just gonna let the middle schools go on as they are?
Director Barlow.
It is true that this part of the agenda is, and the slide presentation was repurposing Fridel Middle School. And for all the reasons identified, I think it would behoove us to, while it is being presented this evening as informational item, I believe, it allows us opportunity to perhaps explore some additional areas of concern that may be out there. I'd simply like to remind my fellow board members that Rochester Community Initiative, which is a group of current high schoolers, shared passionately and honestly their experiences, both, both past and present, within Rochester Public Schools. It's not that we have to convene another organization to hear from. There's even a larger group consisting of hundreds of respondents, of current, former students, parents, who provided their life experience as well. And, and I'm simply saying, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. We simply need to honor what we've heard and to value what is said. This is one of the challenges of when we invite people in to hear their voice and to tell their story, to then turn our back as if what they said is of no value. I don't really believe that to be the case. But I think, for me, it is about honoring and acting as if we have heard, we believe, and we're looking for that better way, that not just compromise, because it's a win-win situation. Ending with the statement, when, when we all do better, we all do better. So, you know, I'm all about everyone doing better, not trying to, to deny opportunity from those who have done well, but to give others opportunity to do well as well.
Thank you, Director Barlow. Director Workman, and then Director Amundson.
You know, we have this huge black cloud hanging over us right now, and it's called COVID. And I've been thinking about this a lot, as has everybody else, and how we were thrown into distance learning last spring. And all of our educational people did a fabulous job putting it together in such little time. And I know it's gonna be better this time around for, for parents who want distance learning or for whatever phase we happen to be in. But I'm looking at this as just this amazing opportunity where we can really, really rethink how we do education. Do we really want to stick with what, however the middle school model is devised, because clearly, it's not working? This gives us a chance to make some changes. And by us, I don't mean those of us sitting here at the board table, the elected board table. But the people who work and teach in those buildings to really come together and be able to collaborate and share their ideas. I mean, when I first came to Rochester, I don't remember what year it was, maybe 1976 or so, I started teaching at Lincoln. And the reason that Lincoln worked so well, right from the get-go, was because the teachers were being given just pretty much free rein. I understand that a lot of teachers, if you give them free rein, they have no idea what to do with it, and that's, I'm not faulting them. But for those who, who did, they managed to bring forth this concept that has continued for over 40 years now, at Lincoln specifically. And the reason that our smaller schools work is perhaps is because there is more opportunity for in-depth collaboration for the staff and the students to get to know each other better. And so when we're talking about, okay, are we rethinking just our district-wide option or just Fridel option? I think we really need to throw middle school into that mix as well. And it's something that can't happen overnight, obviously. We can't turn the ship around 180 degrees in, in, you know, five minutes, obviously. And, and maybe the ship doesn't need to be redirected a lot. But it seems to me, to be pretty clear to me that middle schools are not working for way too many of our students, and especially for our students of color. It has to work for everybody, and we really have to work on, on thinking outside the box. And I, I just would like us to consider that at some point moving forward when we talk about, if we talk about our other district-wide option schools, and specifically in this case, Fridel.
Melissa.
I just had a clarifying question going back to what Director Barlow said about hearing from students, and, and I believe that student voice is so very important. And I'm just checking to see if you were referencing one of the meetings that not all school board members were permitted to attend because of size of the, of the body, if we went over the quorum and representation, that kind of thing. Because if so, I don't remember seeing a report on that. And I, I'm deeply interested in hearing some of the perspectives that were shared to that smaller group of the board. If so, Director Barlow, was that the meeting that only three of you, two or three of you went to?
Well, I can certainly respond to that and additionally allow, with the board chair's approval, allow Director Marvin to perhaps speak too. I believe, short answer, yes.
Okay.
And then Director Marvin, I think you were given the opportunity, unless I missed it, you were going to share out with the board. Have you done that, or did I miss that? Not to put you on the spot or anything, but...
Okay, so I'm not sure what I need to share out. We absolutely honor and respect the messages from our students. The challenge is that students who have gone to district-wide option schools love their schools, and they speak out for the advantage of those schools. And the students who've gone to our other schools, for the most part, love their schools. And the pros and the cons of both seem to be the same. So it, it's difficult to have, we need to get the input from students, but the thing is, they've had one experience. And so, and we believed them when they said it was good or bad, and these are the things that didn't work. But when we ask them to compare, how was this experience compared to other students' experience? They don't know, because they haven't had that. So I'm not sure if that's what you were speaking to.
Uh, no. But having said that, we'll use Rochester Community Initiative as an example. Minutes were taken, we gave them opportunity to clarify that information. And I thought there would be a sharing of that information with our board members. I could have aired in, in what I thought was going to be a next step, because that apparently is what Director Amundson is alluding to, that she was not made privy to those conversations. Though I think we have at the board table previously shared out some of those high-level responses that we did get. But that being said, is it possible, would we, is it possible to share, share the conclusions or the high points of those discussions?
Well, it absolutely is. And from my perspective, it has been, but we can do better. And I'm thinking right now, the issue is the student voice, which we are committed to and which will continue to be important. And the decision about how Fridel is gonna go forward. So right now, I'm hoping we can focus on how we are gonna decide how this building and this specific district-wide option is going to be decided. So, and Dom, what you're saying is so important. And you, I know, have been a huge advocate and supporter for our students, as our number of us. But I, I think discussion now is, is about how the Fridel site is gonna be used for the next several years.
Melissa.
For me, this is, is just a way of coming around to, to close the loop. You know, we have anecdotal data, which, or anecdotal evidence, which is, is being shared by Director Barlow, which is great. But if this is a question about Fridel as a district-wide option program, to me, this is a larger district-wide option discussion that should happen before a decision is made about Fridel. And if we are to do that, then I think an effort needs to be made to collect a wide range of experiences and perhaps make an effort to turn that into more objective than subjective data. If this is not a discussion about a district-wide option program, if this is about needing to close the building for financial savings, then, I know I've said this before, and I'll say it again, then I think it needs to take place during a discussion about financial issues, and it needs to be prioritized as such. Because if we close Fridel anticipating financial issues, and then those issues don't come up, or we find another way of closing our budget gap that doesn't include closing Fridel, it's too late. Fridel as a program is gone. So to me, I, I personally, as one board member, need to know, is this a discussion about budget? Or is this a discussion about district-wide options? Or is this something entirely different? But I don't have the information that I need to proceed.
I, I can address that, Deborah. This, this is a discuss, and I'll apologize for when I was asked about the segregation comment that was on the slide. And I'm the one that mentioned, you know, truly that would fit not just for Fridel, but all of our district-wide option schools. So I guess I'll take credit for steering this conversation in that direction. But this really came out of the work of the task force that had worked for the referendum. They came to the board multiple times to give updates, and closing Fridel was shared with the board multiple times. So this really ties into the referendum work. It's a recommendation of the task force, was to close Fridel. Came back, the recommendation was to repurpose, that as they looked at other district needs, we had, facility needs we had across the district, they changed that recommendation to repurposing that building. we had across the district, they changed that recommendation to repurposing that building. The additional information that was provided tonight was what Deborah asked me to share tonight. So that's, that's why all that information was brought forward. And she, like she said, she thought about all the different things that the board was hearing, or that might need to have in order to make that decision. So really, it, it centers down to the work of the referendum. And the recommendation task force was to do this. I shared with you the, the reason for why we are bringing it here, because of the timeline that all of these decisions, decisions need to be made by the board, so we can start working on the boundaries. And I agree, if, you're right, Melissa, if we are going to have a conversation about all district-wide option schools, then that needs to happen, because if we do choose to eliminate those, that also is going to have an impact on how we draw up boundaries. So that is an important conversation. But really, this agenda item is here because the task force recommended it. We presented it at that time. We weren't ready to move forward on that. One of the questions we got asked, well, why we need to make it now? Well, that's why I shared with you tonight the timeline, that these are all the decisions that need to take place at the board level, so we can start working on, on the boundaries and get those completed and ready to present to our parents and families of fall of twenty-one. So um, so really, the conversations all, this is all connected to the referendum work. I apologize for making, bringing up the district-wide option schools, which took this conversation a different direction. But really, it all comes back to, here's the recommendation of the task force. I will be honest with you, and I think we even shared this at one of the meetings, they even looked at closing, they made a recommendation internally as a group. We had a conversation about, should we close all district-wide option schools? But, and it didn't make it through as a final recommendation to the board. But I do know the task force did have that conversation, it was brought up by several members of the task force. But when the final recommendations were made, that did not come. But it, the recommendation was to repurpose the Fidel building.
Thank you, Superintendent, and um, I don't think you need to apologize for setting us off on a trajectory, that happens often. I looked at, I'm taking some notes, and then I look back up, and three more hands have popped up. So I don't, I'm pretty sure that Julie's hand was up next. Um, after that, it's, I'm, I'm going to have to just guess between the other two of you. Julie, go ahead.
Well, I remember those meetings very well.
Sorry, my fault.
Okay, I look unmuted. Can people hear me?
Yes, yeah, it, I'm sorry, again, when superintendent, no, it's me. When Superintendent speaks, I have to turn my computer audio off, and then I forget to turn it back on, so sorry.
Okay. Um, so I remember those meetings in the fall of twenty eighteen extremely well, and although I did not have time to watch the entire four-hour board meeting from October sixteen, twenty-eighteen, I did, was able to watch some of the, the um parts that I thought would be helpful in refreshing my memory as to um the whole business of the task force making program recommendations to begin with. For example, um, they wanted to move Montessori to Hoover to increase the Franklin capacity, and then Chair Seelinger, um, Director Seelinger at the time, um, was concerned about um disparities that might result because of that. Um, the newcomer in the Spanish immersion programs were supposed to go to Bishop and Bamber, or that was one of the recommendations. Forty-five fifteen at Pinewood. Let's see, what else do I have? I think, I think those were pretty much it. Oh, and then sell Fidel. So the point that I made then, and the point that I am making now, is that we have to keep the building issues separate from the district-wide option um questions, in that I think we've kind of settled where we're going to be building and how our buildings are going to be expanded. So to bring back at this point, a recommendation about program change from the task force is, is really boggling my mind. I mean, maybe I'm just so frazzled from the beginning of the meeting, when I was having technical difficulties here, that I haven't quite pulled my brain together yet. But um, I'm not, I'm not sure why we're going down this road again, and I will watch the rest of that meeting, and I will come prepared with, I hope, some specific actual quotations out of that study session, if, on the sixteenth of October twenty eighteen, if that's what it's going to take to, to figure out what we're going to do with district-wide options. A planning team for buildings, in my opinion, and I, you're welcome to disagree with me, I can handle it, has absolutely no business making program recommendations. As a former educator, who unfortunately am going to be stuck in that mindset for the rest of my life, that I am an educator, it just made no sense to me, and there were a lot of board members who concurred at that time. You know, perhaps the people who are on the board now, who are sitting at the audi, in the audience, might remember it a little differently, but that room was packed at the time. And um, in case you haven't noticed, I'm a little bit irritated with this, so I should probably stop now before I really get myself in trouble.
Director Nathan, and then Director Atkinson.
Okay, I want, I want to be succinct, and I want to stay on the topic of Fidel. So I agree with um Director Workman about um the task force not making um program decisions, and also followed that conversation, and um there were a number of expressions from the board members at the time, that um they were not in favor of um some of the program recommendations that had come from the task force. But if we were looking at this without having started with a building conversation, if we were looking at this question simply as, should we close the Fidel district-wide option small middle school program? What concerns me about this conversation is that we have an educational program that by no measure is failing. The data you gave us tonight shows they have among the lowest disparities when it comes to discipline, law enforcement referrals, the highest achievement for general education students in all of our um underrepresented categories, with one exception for Hispanic students, I believe in math. So we have a program that is successful, and we're talking about ending it to use the building without having a conversation about its future. So I, I wonder the kind of message it sends across the district to anyone in our, in our, in our staff who's looking to implement an innovative program that is showing success, that can be ended without a um comprehensive evaluation of its, of its, of its costs? I've only heard one area of cost that Fidel costs more for transportation, and its benefits, and I really haven't seen a comprehensive analysis of its benefits, and what are those benefits we can retain going forward, even if it's not in that building, which we need for other reasons? So trying to keep the conversation of just on the Fidel decision and not to a broader district-wide option, from an educator's standpoint, for the educators in the room, from a administrative standpoint, Superintendent Munoz? Under what criteria do you use to end a successful program that's successful for the students it's serving? That's how I'm looking, that, I'm trying to, I'm trying to rationalize the data that you gave us, and then how that leads us to a decision.
Well, I, I could go deeper into the data. I think you might want to look at the uh, the enrollment within that uh school. I do think there are some, as we said, the man, the advantages are, I see the biggest advantage is it's a small school, because it is small, you can uh create more of that family atmosphere that you mentioned, Kathy. I, I, I'll go back to what I said earlier. This is all part of the facilities work that we've done. This is a recommendation, you're right. The task force do not make decisions, that's why it's to you as a board to make that decision. It's just a recommendation from the group that looked at addressing not only our capacity, but other, I, I'm drawing a blank on what were the four areas that they were focused on when they were looking at our facility needs. You know, I, I guess I would ask the board, what more information? The information I provided you, I was directed to provide that information. I did not say that is the information that um should be used to make that decision. You know, i, if, if what we need, we need a decision, one way or the other. You know, if it's not going to be changed, that's fine, that'll help us in the boundary work, we'll bring some of the other recommendations. If the board says, no, we're not going to do them, that's fine, we'll make it work. I agree a hundred percent, the task force is not making decisions. If that's the case, we wouldn't be having this conversation right now, it would be done already. But recommendations were brought to the board, and we're bringing them back to get approval or disapproval, so we know where we need to move on to. And if we choose not to repurpose Fidel, okay, that helps us in our boundary work, that helps us in, no, we have to either build a gymnastics center or find another one, we have to try to find a permanent home for the middle school right fit. I mean, it, we have other things that we'll do based on what decisions are made on, on the Fidel building. So um, I think we have to be careful when we look at pieces of data. One of the things, um, a few years ago, when we had Dr. Muhammad and Dr. Cruz do some professional development for our, our district, and one of the things they talked about is, and Dr. Cruz said, you know, my kids started on third base. And, and personally, my kids, when they went to school, they started on third base, because I was an educator, I, I had resources, I could, I could get them ready. But not all of our kids come into our schools already on third base. They, they come in, in the dugout, or maybe not even in the, the ballpark. And I, I think when we, if we really dug deep into our, our data, either discipline data or achievement data, um, you would, you would see the schools that have a high percentage of kids that start on that third base, they do really well. Schools that don't, don't do as well as those other schools. So um, you know, I, I guess I'm just looking from guidance from the board on what more needs to be presented, so a decision can be made. And however it's made, we'll, we'll move forward and do what we need to do to make things work.
Thank you, Superintendent. So um, I hear the frustration in my colleagues' voices, and the frustration at some of the information provided, and I asked the Superintendent to provide this information, and I'm not going to apologize for that. What I think, what I feel is happening um for me, is that I think that we are looking at um some data that um in, well, for me, is uncomfortable. I am uncomfortable with the, the differences between our free and reduced price lunch percentages between this particular building and our other buildings. I'm a little uncomfortable with some of the percentages of the minority enrollment at this building and other percentages. I am uncomfortable when I look at the um financial pieces, and yes, the only specific piece of transportation, but that it costs Fidel students eleven hundred dollars per year to transport versus four hundred and ninety-eight dollars per year for our other students. I, I think that we need to, um, we are not going to make a decision tonight, but I think we also can't be uncomfortable with the fact that this is a school that per student uses more resources than others, and is that okay? Is that okay with us philosophically? I don't know the answer for myself, and I certainly don't know the answer of my colleagues. I don't see any other way forward than to have data in front of us. That is what I have heard my colleagues say over and over and over, we want data. And that was my intention in asking the Superintendent to provide this information. I think when we think about what's out in the ether, the things we cannot control, when, when we talk about students on a waiting list, I wanted to know about the waiting list, I wanted to know how many students apply and actually get into the spots at Fidel. Superintendent provided those. I feel like it's um I feel like we're talking about a lot of things, but not necessarily the right things. That's my opinion. How we move forward from this, I, I don't know. I don't know um with Superintendent. And I appreciate that he always says, whatever you, the boards will, that's what we will do, we will figure it out, and I believe that to be true. If this board is not interested in repurposing this building for other programs, that's fine, we just have to figure out a way to either, I don't know if we call that a vote, I don't know if we call it a consensus, I don't know what we call it, but we need to get that information forward um in a timely fashion. So um, I would like to focus our remarks back to the repurposing of Fidel. I look like I have Melissa and then Kathy.
Um, so it is an informational item, um, so I, I assume that we're just looking for direction here, as, as Chair Seelinger just said, which, my personal direction is, I'm uncomfortable having this discussion of whether or not Fidel remains a district-wide option under the premise of it being a facilities decision. I am very interested in continuing the discussion about A, district-wide option, and how we're handling them, and what their future is, and what we can do to improve it if, if it's part of our future. B, what Director Nathan said about taking what is, um, what people see as the benefits of Fidel and applying it to our other middle schools, because the timeliness is key, having a new middle school building come up. And C, what is C? When we have the, the budget discussion, the questions that, that Chair Seelinger just referenced about the cost per student, and whether, you know, that's a good thing. I, I, I think this is going to come up other times and other contexts, and it will be very appropriate for us to have that conversation at that time, with some intentional study on those topics ahead of time. And I would caution whichever one of our very capable administrative people takes on those types of investigations or heads up that kind of study, that um there are numerous questions that have been raised today and more that we haven't had a chance to get to, that I think could be input into that study, rather than waiting until the end and saying, here's what we think, and here's the recommendation. It might be wise to have a pre-test, a, a conversation before we go into it, about what type of criteria um the board might be interested in considering, so that we have time to have those conversations and/or surveys and/or research. So my, my, my current is, I have no interest in closing Fidel as a facility discussion, please come back and talk about it in another context. That's my input, thank you.
Kathy.
Um, so I'm, I'm trying to look for a way forward while honoring the Superintendent's find, if you will, that we have other programs, um, Right Fit, um, and Rail, and, and extracurricular program gymnastics, that need, that need a home. I think I would have felt better about this conversation. I think I would have felt better about this conversation not being, um, I think I would have felt better about this conversation if one of the options that were on the table was considering a new home for Fidel. We're, we're taking their building and closing the program, but we're never stopping to ask whether it should be continued. Now, if the problem is that the lottery process doesn't give us the diversity that we need, is that a reason to close the program? Or is it a reason to change the process by which students are accepted to the program? If people aren't feeling welcomed by some of our buildings, is, is that a reason to shut down the program? Or is it a reason to look at our methods to be more welcoming? So I don't know if the Superintendent is willing to consider an option to house, let's stop calling it Fidel, a district-wide option, smaller middle school program with the components of what Fidel has now, in a different location. Most likely co-located with another middle school because we don't have another isolated building, for example. I would, I would, I would, it's the same thing with the bell time study. Tell me the bad news. If it can't exist anywhere else efficiently, effectively, cost-effectively, realistically, that's information that I need to have. Because that's, that for me is the trade-off. If we need this building to meet the other needs of programs that are just as important as Fidel, I don't want anybody to think that Rail or Right Fit or the gymnastics program don't have a need that needs to be met and we need to meet it. And it's going to cost us money to meet it. But we also have a need of these students that are currently at Fidel. The ones who have chosen it in the past and the ones that might choose it at the future. And I just did it myself. A district-wide option, smaller middle school program. I want to try to not call it Fidel anymore because Fidel is a building. Um, so if I knew that, if, if, if you could give me the, the data on that, is it possible, is it not possible? Then that's an option that I can get out of my head and I can really look at the, um, the cost benefit of the decisions that you, that you put in front of us. But infusing what Fidel has been successful at, um, in other middle schools, I think is so important. And, um, yeah, that's all I have for now.
Thank you. Um, I'm going to make a suggestion, um, as it's 7:30 and we started at four and we have some other agenda items. Superintendent, um, and please tell me if you are not comfortable with my suggestion. Um, I suggest that we just wrap up this item. We've heard a lot, from a lot of voices, we've heard a lot of information. Perhaps, um, this could be further discussion among the cabinet as you digest what's heard. I think our board colleagues need to, um, digest what we, um, our thoughts and what the thoughts of our colleagues was and then, um, make a plan going forward. But, um, I, I don't want to cut, cut anybody off, that's not what I'm saying. But I'm feeling, um, I'm feeling a little, uh, that we might be getting a little talked out and talking around on this item. And so, um, it might be best to just move on. Superintendent?
I agree.
Kathy.
I know you said move on, but I'd just like to know from you because I think you've been, as you say, um, so what I think I hear you saying, are there, and is there anything that you wrote down that you think you heard us saying in terms of, uh, either a direction for more information or going forward that you could just share with us all, so we're on the same page?
Me, the summarizer, you mean?
Yeah.
No. I have lots of notes. Um, how about we do this? Can we just sort of, um, take a few minutes? Not a few minutes. Not a few minutes. Take some time to think and then, um, do some reflection. And then perhaps I can, um, uh, maybe email out some, you know, pull out some themes and then see if we can kind of reflect back and make sure that I've captured everything. And I know that I usually try to do that and thank you for asking Kathy, but, um, I kind of have a lot of notes and so I don't want to, um, I, I don't want to spend time doing that right now. Is that, is that acceptable? Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you, board members. I think, um, although, um, long and, um, it was a good conversation, but, um, we have much other business to do. So maybe we're thankful we started at four o'clock this afternoon. Okay, let me get back to the agenda.
Can I, can I interrupt you for just a second on that?
Yep.
Um, I just, because there have been, um, questions about open meeting law, could you just clarify what you mean about emailing us and whether or not that is doing business, not in a public forum?
Yes, thank you, Director, for bringing that up. No, we will not be violating any open meeting law. Um, I will simply, uh, send out a summary of our notes, um, similar probably to minutes and then just for your, um, viewing. There will be no, uh, emailing back and forth between board members. It will be just to, uh, ensure that everything is captured. If it is not captured, that will come back to us in a public meeting for discussion.
Okay, I, I have to jump out in with Melissa too because if you're summarizing like you would it in a meeting, the public, public actually gets to hear your summaries, which are always excellent. In this case, it's going to be written, in written form to the board, but the public has to see it. I'm, I'm sorry, I just, otherwise, I get an email like that from you, Deborah, I'm not even going to open it because I'm paranoid right now.
Better safe than sorry, right?
Um, so I will say this. The Superintendent, um, will direct a staff member, please, to send us a summary of our discussion. So if it comes from Superintendent, it is not, uh, uh, coming to open meeting law, coming through me as a violation of open meeting law discussion. Does that seem reasonable, Superintendent?
Yes, we will be happy to do that.
Okay, thank you. I know we have a, a cabinet member taking notes, so that will probably be much easier than me trying to go back and read my chicken scratch anyway. Uh, Director Schlusner, did you have something to add?
Yeah, just in the spirit of this open meeting law stuff, a quick question for the Superintendent. Just to be clear, this is to come up with a final recommendation for school boundaries since the information previously provided was very preliminary and very draft. Since there are folks in our community who think that what was provided earlier was final, which is not the case.
Yes, that is true. And, um, this is one of other decisions that need to be made by the board so we can start drawing up the official boundaries, uh, for the, when all the new schools are built. But yeah, there, I mean, no decision's been made tonight. We will just try to, uh, reflect on what we heard and try to provide the information to address what we heard, so the board can get to a point where they can make a decision, one way or the other.
Great, and I'm sure our community will be very aware when an actual final recommendation comes forward.
Yes.
Thank you.
Director Nathan?
Sorry, I'm not doing well with my hands.
Okay, put your hands down, thank you. All right, folks, we're moving on. If I can find it, okay. Uh, seven, efficient and effective operations. 7.01 Rochester Public School Building Update. It's our dream team coming to give us the status of our new buildings. This is such an exciting time in our district. Do you note the excitement in my voice, Superintendent?
Yes, at this time, I'm going to turn things over to Scott Sheridan, Executive Director of Operations, Kevin Holm from LHB, Jason Woodhouse from CRW, and Keenan McWalters from Knutson Construction.
Thank you, good evening, everyone. Yes, I agree, Chair, that it is a very exciting time here, especially tonight. You know, the next board doc as far as, uh, seeking approval, because that's the, the main one that'll allow us to break ground next week if it's approved. But this particular board doc relates to the, uh, updates of all the projects that are going on. And it's a little narrowly focused this time around because, uh, Kevin Holm and Jason from, well, Kevin from LHB and Jason from CRW, the architects, are going to provide you, uh, the design development, they'll go over the design development of the 2019 elementary school. This is the Schmidt Park School. And then I believe Jason's going to go over the Harriet Bishop Schematic Design. And this is our seventh update that we're providing to you that began, uh, last February. So I am going to turn it over to Kevin. Or Kevin, are you there? Do you want to start, I assume?
Hi, I'm here. Um, I think if we have Keen start with the, did you want to do the bids first? Did you want to do the building design presentations first?
Building design presentation.
Okay, then I can get started. All right. Can everybody see the presentation for the PowerPoint?
Yes.
All right. Oh, again, this is the design development, um, presentation of the 2019 elementary. So, um, although our site package and structural package is 100% complete and has been bid out, the architectural fit-out, um, as well as the mechanical electrical systems are still in the, I'll call it mid-design phase. So design development is between our schematic approach and then our actual construction documents. So what you're going to see today is, uh, very, very close rendition of, of what the building will be. Again, just, uh, some feed, or some, uh, reminders of where we were at with how the building should feel and some of the goals of, of the buildings and where they should end up and how they should serve the students in the community. So this site, uh, if you see the top of it, it does actually say final site plan and bid pack one. So this is the actual final grading that has been, has gone through the city approval process. It's still a couple of minor items that need to be finalized with the city before we get our permit. But we are hoping that we will get our permit, um, by the end of the week or, um, Monday or Tuesday of next week. Again, the parent entry is off of the northeast corner. And, uh, we show the bus entry off of Granite Drive, uh, northwest on the left-hand side of the image. Uh, one of the conditions of the, um, approval of the city was a mid-block crossing. And, uh, if you see the word Overland Drive Northwest at the top middle, uh, we will be showing a mid-block crossing at that location. City Council just approved, um, the final plat last night at their city council meeting. Uh, and one of the items was that we also provide flashing yellow lights at that mid-block crossing. And the city will participate in helping to pay for those lights if it's over $10,000. Uh, you can see two playgrounds on there. Those are the blue spots on the west side of the white building. Um, those are the early childhood, oh, I shouldn't say early childhood, excuse me, K through one, uh, possibly two, so the primary grades. And then the older kids would be in the item marked B, uh, which would be the three through five. Uh, the bus loop does double as a hard surface play area and as event parking spaces, uh, should you have a evening event that requires more parking than the lot on the east side. The floor plan, uh, from this image, you can see that we've started to populate it with furniture. The furniture will actually be a separate, um, package that will be, uh, that will go through your purchasing department. But we are assisting in the types of, of furniture pieces as well as the quantities and sizes of them. Again, the brown area on the bottom is the main office and that is also where the secure entry is, uh, with the cafeteria right there. When we look at the second floor, uh, you can see the other pods. And there you can see that the media center has started to become populated with shelving as well as some different types of seating, soft seating, table seating for classes and study. Uh, the maker space and the classroom have started, started to become populated with furniture as well. One update on the gender-neutral toilet, um, scenario. So there is a little bit of a, of a code requirement as to, uh, what we can actually do as far as full gender-neutral toilets. Where we've landed on that is the main public toilets on first floor near the gym. So the red area just to the right of the big blue box, that will be gender-specific. Uh, beyond that, the, um, large handicap restrooms that have sinks in them will be gender-specific and the six stalls in between will be neutral. So the vast majority of your toilet stalls will be gender-neutral facilities for, for any student to use. Uh, safety and security, this is the same plan that we had looked at last time with you. Again, just making sure that we provide the opportunity to, to separate your building and, uh, and isolate portions of the building if there is an intruder. Uh, most importantly is the image on the right-hand side, making sure that we have passive observation and can observe people as they approach the building. Same type of scenario happens inside the building where there's a lot of glass and glazing inside that you'll see. And that is to help teachers observe the students and control the situation, um, within, within the building. This is an aerial image from the southeast. That is the main entry on the left-hand side of the building. And then you can start to see some window shades to help, uh, level off the lighting in those south-facing classroom, uh, areas. And then the vast majority of the classrooms are north-facing, so they have, uh, really good daylighting without the direct sunlight glare issues. This is from grade level, um, looking at the main entry. So that is the secure entry you're looking at. And then you can start to see some of the building signage on the building itself. This is the bus entry location. So the glass area that you see on the right-hand side is the cafeteria for the space. Uh, the large tan space that kind of shows a bouncing ball on it is actually the gymnasium. And here you can also see the playgrounds, um, that are starting to show up within the renderings. If you are driving in the entry road, this is one of the images you would see. The two classrooms on the east side of the building coming out at you. Uh, those large glass areas go into both the stairwell that connects the two floors as well as, uh, daylights the group learning spaces that are just beyond the glass. This is a aerial view if you were standing above Granite Drive and Overland Drive intersection. So you can start to see the classroom wing coming towards you as well as the, uh, playground for the older kids in the foreground. So just after your lower left would be the large, um, open green field space for the students to run around in. And the tree grouping on the left-hand side of the image is representing the current existing mature trees that are on site that we were able to save. This is an image of the cafeteria. That is the main stair going up. You can see we've started to incorporate some seating and, and different forms of, of, uh, interaction spaces within the building as you go through it. Uh, this is one of the group learn areas. Uh, so the lower-level group learns in all three houses, one being kindergarten, one being first, one being second, all have those, um, built-out, um, seating areas. And that would be for storytime or, uh, some kind of a introduction. On the left-hand side, you can start to see, um, one of the, uh, monitors, digital monitors that you would have within the facility. Here would be if you took about 20 steps backwards, uh, now you can start to see the, um, area rug in front of the, uh, projection screen monitor as well as some fun soft seating for the kids to be able to wiggle on and move around on, um, and, uh, kind of be the kids that they are while they're learning, active learning. This is what the media center would look like. Uh, the images, uh, at the far end are the, um, maker space and the, um, classroom area. So both of those areas have, um, overhead doors and allows them to open up to the space. Uh, the blue roof area is a small group room, small work, small group workroom, uh, for students to work on project spaces and be acoustically isolated but still be fully visually connected, um, for that passive observation piece. This is what a typical classroom might look at, look like. You can see the glazing on the right-hand side. That is actually a south-facing window. Uh, the reason I know that is because it has the sun shade outside of it. And then the window- And then the window on the left-hand side is actually looking from the classroom into the group learning area uh for that passive observation piece. You can see that the tables uh are not desks anymore. They're movable tables. They can be configured in multiple ways and forms and shapes uh for different types of learning and educational purposes. This is the secure entry. Uh the image on the, or the glass on the left goes directly into the main office area. So as somebody enters, you can see and observe them before they get to the opposite cell. So throughout the bath, or throughout the building, we have drinking fountains. Uh we do have sinks in the group learn locations as well as within each classroom. So there's always access to uh to water, both for washing and cleanup of projects and events. Again, what a typical classroom might look like. And again, the furniture is uh being selected and sized to the type of student or the size of the student. So even in that last classroom, you can see that there was a sink basin that was only twenty-four inches high and that's for kindergarten-age students. And then it finishes in the media center here. The last image is a fly-around from the exterior. Again, right now we're above the parent entry coming in. So you can get a little bit of a feel for the entry sequence. Uh quite a bit of stacking distance for parents on drop-off in the morning and pickup in the afternoon. Formal entry into the building. The large glass area in the middle is the media center on the upper level. Again, that mature grouping of trees is on the right-hand side, the existing grouping that's there. That north stair is both for internal egress as well as um access or return from the playground and access to the green space to the north and the tree oak cropping. That is the service area. So this building doesn't really have a backside, so we had to try and uh create one and hide it from from the other faces of the building. Any questions on twenty nineteen elementary?
Well, Ca- Kevin, that is a beautiful building. I got a little winded going up the stairs. Sorry, couldn't resist.
Yep.
Um, Mr. Schlusner, go ahead, please.
A quick question on timelines, Kevin. Signage. When do you need a school name by to meet your signage order?
Uh the school name should be completed, I would say, within the next um six months, seven months. Uh in the meantime, we'll have, we'll carry the twenty nineteen elementary school as the, as the name so that we have a quantity of digits identified or or uh characters identified to uh price it out.
Okay, then I guess follow-up to the superintendent is a reform of some for, some form of a committee to come up with a community acceptable name.
Uh yes, we'll have to do that. I I, that's the first I heard tonight that the uh Kevin's timeline for having a name identified. But we will look at policy and then also uh look at what we've done in the past. If I, if you recall, for the naming of the Mi- uh Mighty Oaks, uh we did uh solicit um name choices from our community and then narrowed down to three and took a voting again. So I don't know if that's the same process you use, but that's something that um we, now that I know that the timeline, we'll have to uh get moving on that one.
Sounds good. Thanks.
Nathan Amundson.
Hi, Kevin. So, and you can tell me if I'm looking at these numbers wrong, but the last um summary of the cost of the new elementary school design was about one point four million higher than what is in the document tonight. And I remember um, I think it was Keen who said uh that they knew that you still had to make some adjustments to the design to get it within our referendum amount, which you've done. But what did you have to cut out?
So a good portion of that, uh I'll let Keen kinda cover the the actual bid results. But a good portion of that is the um successful bidding that we just um completed, which was about ten million of the twenty-five million dollar in construction cost. Uh one of the items that we did take out was the wood trusses. They actually came in much higher than we had anticipated. And so the uh, so we will have a standard steel roof frame in the cafeteria in the media center. Uh beyond that, it's been um kind of material changes. We had another uh area in the building where the ceilings were quite expensive. And so we have started looking at other options for that ceiling area to to make up some of those savings as well. But a good portion of it was the good bids that we received and our ability to reduce the contingency, um the bidding and estimating contingency, because we now have hard bids in and we have more information, the drawings for Knutson to be more accurate with their estimating purposes.
Sorry. I was gonna say, you said I could be next, maybe I'll just jump in. Um, hi, Kevin. The um, uh if I heard you correctly, the bathrooms near the gymnasium are going to be not gender-neutral. They'll be gender-specific. Is that the correct bathrooms that I'm talking about? You said in the main public areas, that the ones near the gymnasium? Okay, so is there any possibility to meet code? I realize this is in a very finalized format. But is there any possibility to designate one single-use bathroom as gender-neutral? Because the intention is to not force a student to have to declare themselves or any, any person, not just students, um not have to declare themselves by choosing between the two bathrooms.
So there is, there is what's called a family restroom in the public space. Um it is actually on second floor, but that is open to to any gender or orientation. And it's also intended.
Area you're saying.
I'm sorry, say that again?
They'd have to go to another area. There's no way to put it in the same area. They'd have to leave the area and go to another wing.
Uh so each wing would have its own grouping of six toilets that would not be gender-specific. But when you're talking about public, if it's after hours and all the wings are closed down, then yeah, the one gender-neutral station is up on second floor right now.
And there's no way at this point in the design to adjust it, to incorporate it in the matlocktop area?
Um.
I I understand we're a long way down the road.
Yeah, we we may be able to look at the way we're securing one of these wings and we might be able to get a, one of the staff toilets to be, become a publicly accessible toilet. We'll have to take a look at that.
Thank you.
Kathy.
So I just have uh one more question about security. So I really appreciate um the slide that focuses on um all the security zones. And um as I looked at the the video, right, flying over the building, um there's those sort of three large glass areas at the end of the wings and kind of in the middle of one of the sides that are sort of facing away from the main entrance and the main parking lot and towards Overland Drive. Um, so what kind of visi- I mean, obviously someone doesn't have direct visibility on that. But are there security cameras or anything else that give us visibility on that backside of the building?
So there will be security cameras um on slash around the building uh for for that, um I'll call it safety and security um type piece, uh as well as cameras within the building. So that is part of this design development phase and construction documents, which is locating those to make sure we have the coverage that the, that the district needs and wants.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions, board members? Okay, shall I move on? You guys were done with your presentation, right?
Yep.
Okay, thanks. Sorry, I lost, I lost one of my devices, so now I'm I'm down, I'm down, I'm down a screen. Uh seven point oh two approval of bids for construction of twenty nineteen new elementary school bid package number one. This is a briefing item, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, I'll turn it over to Scott Sheridan. He's actually Director of Operations. And actually the three same consultants, but we have Cole Nelson, Assistant Coordinator of Construction Services, will also be joining.
Thank you. Just, I don't mean to impose on this, but um on the prior board doc, Jason, did you wanna do a presentation on the uh schematic design for Harriet, for the Harriet Bishop site?
Yes.
So is there a way to go back to the prior one? I'm sorry about that.
That's okay. Um like I said, I I lost my, my internet connection for my board docs item, so um let's just go back and I'll reintroduce the item. Um apologies, Scott and Jason. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Can you go ahead then?
Yes, please.
Alright, good evening, board members. Um as Scott mentioned, I'll do a brief presentation on the status of Harriet Bishop Elementary Design, which we're at the schematic design level. So not quite as far along as twenty nineteen. Um but I'll just walk you through the floor plan, site plan, uh some renderings, give you an idea where things are at and let you ask any, any questions or make any comments, so. So real quick, just um again, I'll walk you through that and then you can ask questions at the end here. Uh same image that Kevin had earlier. This is some of our basis for the design that we we gathered through the goal sessions and other committee meetings early in the design process. Uh this is a current site plan of of Harriet Bishop. The, the white area is the new elementary school building. So the existing building would actually sit where this parking lot is. And so this was set up to be able to be built while that existing building is still in place, still in use. Um there is potential that um there may be options to to relocate students and and make this work where that could come down before this is built. And that's, I guess, just in discussion levels now, but um this can work with the existing building in place, so. Currently, there'll, there'll be an entrance off of Thirty-Six Avenue that will be the one point of access to the site for both the bus entrance and the parent drop-off. So buses would come in here um for drop-off. There'd be an entry into the building on the south side, which connects to the cafeteria. The playground areas are also off this area on the south. And so during the the school day, this area will be used as hard surface play area. And then there's also the open uh green space connected to this as well. We are showing a connection that extends out to the West Circle Drive uh bike path to provide access off of that area. And then the the main parking lot here, the parent drop-off will will begin here and that will loop around the sidewalk and drop-off points will be near here, which the main entrance to the building is is in this corner uh next to the main office. Um this is a a challenging site, uh both for size of site, being surrounded by the homes as well as the hillside along West Circle Drive. So with this, we are showing a, this is a required fire access lane along the north side to allow a fire truck to get to all sides of the building. Um on the other school sites, we do have roads in more open areas, so they have not required that on those sites, but since we have, we have homes along the north and quite a bit of change in topography along the east, we do need to bring that road back here to provide fire truck access. So as part of that, we are also bringing the the service access to the backside here. Um there'll be a loading dock here. So during the day, most of the small truck deliveries can turn around back here and come out the same way they go in so that they're not going through the bus drop-off area, which is also that play space. And then any large semi-trucks that would deliver things such as milk will be scheduled uh early in the morning before school starts, much like is done at at Gibbs Elementary. And so there'll be a gated access here that would be opened and allow a truck to pull through, deliver and then pull out and around and leave the site. So we are looking, we have discussed options to create a second entrance into the site to be able to separate bus drop-off and parent drop-off, which would also help the stacking distance within the site. Um again, that comes down to some budget questions on on property and construction, so. Currently, we're showing it this way, but we do have in mind that we could create another connection into this road that would serve as a parent connection for that drop-off area. Let's see, we'll go to the next slide. So this is the first floor plan of of Bishop. Again, it kind of lays out, I won't walk through every space, but the brown area in the middle is the main office. And so that kind of creates the the hub of the building. Uh the classroom wings are nearby that for easy access. And then to the south of that is more the the common space such as cafeteria, media center and gym. And so the main entrance is right here, next to the office. The cafeteria has this angled wall um and provides connection down to the gym space, which is then connected directly to the the rec space outside. Um you got kitchen in the middle here with building services behind it. That's the loading dock area that we sh- we saw in the site plan. Media Center is also kind of the hub of the building, um located near um all these classroom wings. And then much like the twenty nineteen elementary, we have the different pods of classrooms. These are a little more consolidated uh due to site constraints, um but they still are broken down into kindergarten, first grade, second grade. And then in in Bishop, we also have the ASD program. So the goal is to have six to eight ASD classrooms within this. Um within the base bid, we will have six ASD classrooms. We are breaking out an alternate, so this red box here will be an alternate um for the addition of two additional classrooms. And again, we're doing this for budget purposes so that if bids come in good and budgets are good, we can incorporate those two additional classrooms, which would serve the the ASD students. students. And then other ops or other ideas, like the, the shared toilets, those are very similar to what you've seen in the 2019 elementary. Going upstairs, again, the classroom wing stacks. We have third, fourth, and fifth grade upstairs, as well as some additional ASD classrooms that are integrated into the classroom wings. We also have art and music upstairs, which would be accessible after hours. So we are positioning doors that different sections, such as the, the wings can be locked off and still allow access by stair and elevator to art and music for after hour activities. And then here is the, the look at safety and security. Again, we're, we're coordinating this with the facilities group and how we want to control these different areas of the building and, and where these locking points are. So you can see the classroom wings can be sectioned off. We can section off near the main stairs. And we can also section off the gym. So we can kind of control the level of, of availability of the different spaces within the building. And much like you saw on Kevin's presentation, this is the main office area and just looking at the, the view sheds from these different areas to be able to control and, and maintain that main entrance as people are approaching the building. And then getting into some of the visuals or the renderings of the building. Again, this is looking at the, the precast concrete walls with some different textures and colors to differentiate the areas of the building and add some interest. So this is looking from the southwest, back towards the main entrance, which is in the corner here. We have the office area, the art and music, and more of that, that orangey red color in the middle. To the left of that is where you get into the classroom wings. On the left side here, to the right of that main entrance would be the cafeteria. So we have quite a bit of glass providing light into that space. And then down on the side here is where you have the bus entrance into the cafeteria. This volume here would be the gymnasium. And you can see the idea of the playgrounds, the bus drop off and all that occurring as well. This next image is down at ground level view. Again, same vantage point, looking back towards the main entrance at that corner, near the office and the cafeteria on the right with that glass. If you're down in the bus drop, drop off area, looking north, we have some, some planter beds, some playgrounds. The bus drop off entrance into the cafeteria would be right there where the pointer is. You can start to see more of the different textures we're looking at on the precast and the different colors to help differentiate areas of the building. This would be looking from the east. Again, you can't see a lot of it from West Circle Drive because of the hill, but this is the loading dock area. We have the media center with the glass in the middle here, provide a lot of natural light into that space. And then we have the glass at the corners where we have stairs near the group learns in the educational wings. This is looking, if you're on that fire lane road on the north side, looking at the northwest classroom wing. So you have the grade classrooms stacked here that are in that gray precast. And then this is the area where we would potentially add two classrooms if the budget's coming good on bid day. So potentially, this gray box would extend with another set of windows for those additional classrooms. And then just kind of coming around the corner on the sidewalk, looking back towards the main entrance to the right there. Again, this is more of the class, the north classroom wings. Again, facing south, the louvers shading those windows. And then this orange helps kind of signify some of the entry points into the building, both at the main entrance and some of these other areas as well. A couple interior ideas that we're looking through, still kind of in design, but just giving you an idea what, what's going on inside. This would be the cafeteria space. Looking north towards the main entrance, so you have the windows on the left side there that look out towards that entrance and the parking lot. On the right hand side would be your, your kitchen access, your serving area. And then in the background, you can see the common stair that's going upstairs, as well as the media center on the right. Looking at kind of an open structure to get some volume in there, as well as some suspended lights and acoustical treatments to make that all come together. Another view of the cafeteria, just moving to the side a little bit, looking back towards that main entrance. And just getting a little closer to there. So that's the main entrance with the office beyond it. You can see the main stairs going up to the upper level. Yeah, that's a quick summary of the inside. Again, this is kind of in the schematic level design, so we're continuing to develop the details on that. And I'll do a quick fly around here. So again, some of the same images, images you saw in those still renderings, but it just gives you a better idea how this all kind of plays out and comes together. We do have a little bit of retaining wall condition on the back due to that hill. We also did try to retain some of that, that hill area on the south side near the playgrounds for, for some sledding activities. Not quite the steep hill they have on the north side, but still does maintain some of that open area. And so this is just going down that fire lane on the north side along the classroom wing. And then coming around the corner, looking at that, the west side into the group learn and the stair tower on the west. And I'll just end by going up towards that main entrance. Where a lot of the kids walking would come down this way to come into school. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Thanks, Jason. Sorry, again, had I missed you?
Not a problem. There's a lot going on.
Board members, Melissa, go ahead.
You're on mute.
Thank you. Hi, same question as I asked Kevin about the option to have at least one gender neutral toilet area in the main area so that students aren't forced to make one or the other choice, or all, all people adults as well.
Sure. And right now, we have a similar setup as 2019, so whoops. So we have a grouping down by the gym that is that split bathroom with male, female. But we are set up, I think we could look at adding a door and creating maybe a separate single user, gender neutral bathroom if we need to. We also do have a, a single use bathroom up near that main stair that would be accessible for after hour events as well.
Very good. Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions, board members? We read nothing into no questions, right? Oh, there's Kathy. Go ahead, Kathy.
Well, I think it, it, we can't go by without saying how, can you call school pretty? How handsome the school is? I, I really think that with each design you guys bring forward, it's clear that you're listening. You listen to our original conceptual ideas that are sort of reflected in that world, word cloud. And the design team, you know, is really doing a good job because we're, we're seeing some patterns and some consistency from school to school, but customized to meet the populations that, that they're going to serve. So thanks and just keep good, keep, keep doing it.
Thank you.
Anything else? Julie?
I have to second what Director Nathan just said. I look at this and not only does it look wonderful from a building perspective, it just, it just makes me think of all the wonderful possibilities that our students are going to have for their education in, in the, these beautiful buildings. And I think you guys have done just a tremendous job. And I'd also like to take some time to directly thank Mr. Sheridan for, for his leadership and all of these efforts. It really does take a team and you guys are amazing. So thank you. I can't wait until we can go inside.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Julie. Okay. Any other, anything else on 7.01, school building update? Did we get it all this time?
I believe we did. Thank you.
Great. Okay. Now we will move on to the second piece, 7.02, approval of bids for construction of 2019 new elementary school bid package number one. Again, this is a briefing item. Superintendent Munoz?
Yes, I already introduced all these individuals, but the same one, but we do have Cole Nelson, Assistant Coordinator of Construction Services, joining our consultants and Scott.
Thank you. Like I said earlier, this is a pretty exciting time right here because this is a big step forward with the pending approval hopefully of the bid package number one. Because this is the, really the kickoff for the major portion of the first building, that's first of four buildings that we're building along with a pool. And with the approval, if we have that tonight, we could actually get started within a week or so. And so it's a pretty exciting time. I do just want to take a quick second to, to thank John Carlson and Cole and Keon and Tanner Swanson. I was unable to attend the interviews for some personal health issues last week. And they really took and created the board docs, did all the interviews, provided all the information to the board. And I really appreciate them doing what they did. And as a note side, Heather did a bunch of work along with the superintendent on the bell time too, that I wasn't able to participate in, just to present tonight, but I didn't participate in creationally. So I just thought they would do their things. So this particular document, as you can see, contains a lot of information. I, I, I believe I can just summarize it in as quickly as I can. I don't believe there's a huge need to go over every single detail, but we'll, we'll be here to answer your questions as need be. But just a brief summary of what we did. On June 30th, the bid and RFPs went out for bid package one. Bid package one was created with the work of the architects, Construction Services Division, and our construction manager agent, Newtson Construction. And three of the, there were actually 11 sections of it. Eight of them are low bid, but three of them are, were best value. And you're very familiar with the best value process. We use it on the, the higher end, more expensive, more complicated pieces that we choose where we want to have the best value versus the lowest bid, because it's so critical to have the top quality people.
Mr. Sheridan?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I think someone's still sharing their screen, and so it's embedded on top of my screen anyway, and with the, the meeting chat open. I didn't know if you were sharing or presenting. There we go. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Sorry about that. Thank you. So with this, like I said, there were 11 parts of it. The three that were best value were the precast package, windows and curtain wall, and then also the earthwork and utility package. So over the course of early last week, a group from Construction Services, and I believe Kevin Holm actually sat in on the interviews as well, they did the interviews with those three different entities. And through the best value process, they made their selection. And for the concrete piece, Wells, for the precast, Wells Concrete was made of the highest in the best value process. For the glass and windows and curtain wall, it was Hentus Glass. And for the earthwork and utilities package, it was Edge Contracting. And then the low bid process is spelled out in the board doc as well for the other eight. There is one with a kind of an asterisk next to it, and that is the, the concrete piece. We did get a lower bid from Benaki Construction as described in the board doc, but they pulled their bid. And so we went to the next highest one, which is Fowler and Hammer. I believe that kind of summarizes all the, the packages. There is a lot of dollar amounts in here, and I realize the resolutions and recommendations are rather long. I apologize. Chair Seiling on that one, but I think we're open for any questions that, from the board. But with any of the group that's here with me, that we could answer any questions we might have.
Director Nathan? Oh, okay, go ahead.
Okay, this is amazing. Never done this before, so it's, it's kind of a first. So I don't even know if this is a good question, but the number of proposals that we got for each of the packages, is that a good number of proposals? Is that usual?
I can answer that one. The number of proposals we got for this project is really outstanding, Kathy. There is unfortunately, or fortunately for us, there's not a lot of work going out for bid right now, so we have a very hungry market. So I think we received six concrete bids, for example. We would hope to receive three under normal circumstances.
Great, thanks.
Thanks for answering. Other questions, board members? Director Marvin?
I think the team. I'm here. I can, you can, hope you can hear me, maybe can't see me. I think the team we have involved in this is amazing, and I would like to move this to action.
Do I have a second?
Second, Workman.
Now you're all hungry to get in there, and we're so excited. Okay. Clerk Nathan, will you take the roll call vote on moving this item to action?
I just need to know who moved it to action? Ms. Marvin?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay, moving to action. Ms. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Barlow?
Aye.
Ms. Marvin?
Aye.
Mr. Schluessner?
Aye.
Chair Seiling?
Aye.
Ms. Workman?
Aye.
Ms. Nathan?
Aye.
Okay.
Great. It is now an action item, and I will read the resolution. And I will try to get the numbers right, folks. Scott, correct me if I get them any wrong, okay?
Sure.
Okay. "Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby accept the best value proposals submitted by Wells Concrete in the amount of $3,49,708 for precast architectural concrete, Hentus Glass in the amount of $939,678 for windows and curtain wall, Edge Contracting in the amount of $2,44,533 for earthwork and utilities. And be it further resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the low bid submitted by Fowler and Hammer in the amount of $1,800,000 for cast in place concrete, Breeze Iron in the amount of $390,800 for structural steel supplies, Red Cedar Steel in the amount of $293,800 for structural steel installation, Schumacher Elevator in the amount of $86,251 for elevators, Rochester Sand and Gravel in the amount of $375,595 for asphalt paving, Fowler and Hammer in the amount of $295,000 for site concrete, and Erosion Control in the amount of $219,000 for landscaping. And be it further resolved- be it further resolved, does the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby reject all bids submitted for heavy timber and glue lamb and the low bid submitted by Benaki Construction for cast-in-place concrete? And be it further resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby accept alternate three submitted by Breeze Iron in the amount of $78,750 for structural steel supplies. Alternate three submitted by Red Cedar Steel in the amount of $48,500 for structural steel installation. And be it further resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve Knutson General Conditions for the sum of $2319,605 for a total cost of $11,941,220.
So moved.
Second, Amundson.
Marvin Amundson moved and seconded. Clerk, will you call the roll?
Ms. Amundson.
Aye.
Mr. Barlow.
Aye.
Ms. Marvin.
Aye.
Mr. Schluessner.
Aye.
Chair Selinger.
Aye.
Ms. Workman.
Aye.
Ms. Nathan, aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, uh all those on that team. Um go for it and get cracking at it. That's awesome.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. 7.03, COVID-19 Extra Costs and Savings. This is an information item. Superintendent Munoz.
Yes, thank you. Uh tonight, John Carlson, Executive Director of Finance, will provide us some information on our COVID-19 costs and savings to date. John?
All right. Good evening, School Board Superintendent. I'm going to run you through uh some of the extra costs we've experienced and some of the savings we've experienced during the pandemic. Um some of these are estimates, some of these are write-on and I'll explain them as I go. And this won't be the only time we give this. Um if you like this information, uh we will continue to track some of this and bring this back regularly for the next few months. Um as I was saying, some of these are estimates in that we took um the actual expenses in March, April, May, and June 2020 and we compared them to the same months in 2019. Some are exact because we did set up extra tracking codes to be able to get um some of these costs dialed in right to the penny. I also want to point out that this does not reflect about $120,000 of supplies that we have ordered in advance of the upcoming school year. Some things like masks and shields and things like that that have not arrived yet and we have not paid for, so they are not included in the numbers yet. So here are some of the real costs that we have experienced. Uh right off the bat, we have an extra unemployment bill of about $455,000. What we found is we laid off very few, if any, employees. Uh we honored the governor's executive order and kept people on the payroll. Uh but what happened, we believe, is that um some of our employees who have second jobs may have lost their second jobs. And then the way the unemployment system works is that the uh unemployment benefits get prorated between all employers. So even though we didn't cause it, we are still paying for some of our employees who lost their other jobs. Um there were some minor expenses there. I just point out repair services, so that was an expense in instructional technology that we used to sanitize uh devices as they came back in after distance learning was over. And then health and safety did get some of the masks and some of the supplies that we ordered for employees and students um uh before we, I prepared this report, so there were $15,000 of um health and safety supplies recorded. We did lose some revenue. Um one of the biggest things was in the athletics and activities, so we did refund all students who had signed up for spring sports and we gave them their registration feedback and that totaled about $207,000. And then in our special ed area, we uh did not receive as much medical assistance billing and those are based on um I don't want to say transactions, but services that um some of our related services providers um give to our students that we weren't able to bill for. And that was about $414,000 of lost revenue there. Now, on the savings side, uh obviously we saved on subs because we um we didn't have a need for as many subs during distance learning. So between teachers and sub pairs, it looks like it's about $236,000 in savings. Um our staff were unable to go to professional development um or or have as much mileage for traveling. Uh that was about $252,000 compared to last year in savings. Uh we did pay um our coaches about half of what they would have earned for the season um in acknowledgement that they did do some preparation before spring season started. Uh but we saved about $140,000 on uh coaching stipends. And then, of course, since there weren't softball games to umpire and baseball games, uh we saved about $24,000 in athletic officials. Our maintenance team had about $46,000 less in uh overtime. And on our utilities, that was a big one. We were able to save on natural gas and electricity to the tune of about $207,000. So all told, these numbers in red are are negative, so uh $481,000 in extra costs. We lost about $629,000 in revenue, but we did save almost $907,000 in bills or expenses that we had budgeted. So so far, what we're tracking is a net cost to the general fund of about $203,000 um due to the pandemic. Again, you can probably add another $120,000 to that at least because there were supplies that are on order that have not been paid for. So maybe we're sitting closer to $300,000 to $325,000 has been the cost um so far. And again, we'll plan to update this as we go over the next few months if this would be helpful to you to to stay in the loop.
Uh thank you, John. Um I I personally find it helpful. I think um there's been a lot of, you know, I I had some questions. I think other folks have questions and um, you know, what is this costing us? But uh it's nice to see what it possibly is saving us, although um sad to say that um it it is having a great impact on um students, student activities, and staff. Uh questions, board members? Um I don't see anybody's hand up. Oh, here comes Kathy. Go ahead.
I'm I'm not a fast clicker tonight. Um so I know I'm asking you to do a crystal ball, but looking back, is this what you expected or or were these higher or lower than you expected and?
Yeah, um I would say at first I was afraid that we were spending a lot more than what we were saving. I was actually quite surprised when we did this work a couple of weeks ago that it was almost close to break even. A couple hundred thousand dollars in a budget that's over $250 million is not that significant, but um it's still um was a cost, but not as bad as I thought.
Can I ask one more? And I don't know if this goes to John or the superintendent, but um obviously, our decision about what to do in the fall is going to be made about um student student and staff safety and on getting everybody the best education they can, but um if there's significant impact financially for some of the directions the district is going in, is that something you'll let us know in a budget update or with the plan or or is it too early to even estimate?
Well, I think John can give, you know, when he gives his normal budget adjustments update, uh we can do it at that time. But I do want to remind the board that we do have some federal funds that we have not made a decision on how to use those. Uh we decided as a cabinet, it might be best to wait to see what uh model we have to implement, knowing that certain models may cost us more than others. So we do have that federal funding that we haven't made a decision on yet.
Um thank you. That's good to know. Uh Director Workman.
Um right. I'll ask John to peer into his crystal ball one more time. Don't blame me, blame Director Nathan for that. But do you foresee the possibility that we might recoup any of this? Or is that dependent on what the superintendent just said with federal funding?
Yeah, I certainly.
I won't hold you to it.
Sure.
I won't hold you to your answer.
We could apply some of these extra costs to the federal funds bucket uh of funding that we got. I have been recommending strongly the superintendent and other cabinet members, just let's hold off. I you know, $200,000 again is not a huge impact. Let's maybe be a little more thoughtful and and quit it instead of being quickly reactive and and spending the federal money because maybe it's better served if we wait and use it later on in the pandemic to kind of avoid some of the, what I see as more drastic budget cuts that might be coming for the next next school year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. I don't see anyone else else with another hand raised, so um I will move us forward. Uh thanks so much and we'll see you next time you got a, next time you got an an item. 7.04, Approval of Adult Meal Prices, 2020-2021 School Year. This is a briefing item. Superintendent Munoz.
Yes, I'm going to turn this over to Amy Icke, Executive Director of Community Education, to brief us on this agenda item.
Good evening, board members. Nice to see you all. I am here on an item that uh we actually have to bring. Uh not much choice to this one, but by law, we have to set a minimum, we have to meet a minimum price for our adult meals within student nutrition services. We serve about 16,000 adult meals a year and we need to cover our costs. And the um MDE sends us a letter each year that indicates what that minimum price is and we were 10 cents behind that. So we need to increase our adult meal price to $3.85 uh for lunch and $1.90 for breakfast. So we're just asking you to formally approve that so that we can be in compliance.
I think my computer is dying a slow painful death from from overuse. Um anybody have any questions?
I'd like to move it to action. Second, Workman.
It's been moved and seconded. Uh Clerk Nathan.
Ms. Amundson.
Aye.
Mr. Barlow.
Aye.
Ms. Marvin.
Aye.
Mr. Schluessner.
Aye.
Chair Selinger.
Aye.
Ms. Workman.
Aye.
Ms. Nathan, aye.
Thank you. It is now an action item. I will read the resolution. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby set the cost of adult lunches at $3.85 and breakfast at $1.90, beginning with the 2020-2021 school year.
As a person who's eaten many, thank you, Ms. Workman, but I've eaten way more school lunches than anybody here. And so with Ms. Workman, I move approval. They're good.
You can, but you you can.
They're duck good bargain too, so there's that.
Yeah, where else can you get breakfast for $1.90, for goodness sakes?
Or lunch, yeah, so.
Go ahead, clerk.
Ms. Amundson.
Aye.
Mr. Barlow.
Aye.
Ms. Marvin.
Yes.
Mr. Schluessner.
Aye.
Chair Selinger.
Aye.
Ms. Workman.
Aye.
Ms. Nathan, aye.
Great.
Thank you.
I'd love one of those lunches right about now. Um and also, just because I have your uh smiling face, uh Ms. Icke, please continue to extend thanks and appreciation to our student nutrition staff. I have been enjoying hearing um friends pick up their tales of picking up lunch and the their children's enjoyment of it all summer long. So um uh much appreciation to you and uh SNS staff.
I will do that. Thank you.
Next item, 7.05, Approval of a Three-Year Agreement with Mayo Clinic Sports Medicine. This is a briefing item. Superintendent.
Yes, uh Mr. Mark Queasley, Activities Director, Century High School, will brief us on this agenda item. Mark?
Good evening, Madam Chair and Directors and Mr. Munoz. Um before you is a new agreement with the Mayo Clinic. Uh in the past, our previous three-year contract included the strength and conditioning, the athletic trainers, and then a marketing part uh of the proposal. Um this time around, the Sports Medicine Department asked us to break our contract into three separate parts and we've negotiated part one this evening that's coming before you. And hopefully the other parts will be soon at the next couple of board meetings. But um again, this is the athletic trainer services. Uh we started this in 2016. Um we feel it's a vital part of our program with just the healthcare prevention um for our students and our students involved in activities. Um the new contract, uh the 2021 will be $18,149, a 1% increase in 2122 of $18,272. And the last year, it jumps up a little bit more uh to $20,158. Um and the reason why it jumps up a little bit in the last year is last board meeting, you approved a concussion component and that helped us keep that cost down because um we have research dollars tied into the first two years of this contract, which helps save us some money. And then the other part is the concussion management piece that they do. And there's a cost of $12 per student. We anticipate that to be about $3,000 per school on top of what you see listed for the dollar amounts there. So if there are any questions, I guess?
Um all right. Thank you, Mr. Queasley. I um know that you came on the meeting right at 4 o'clock with the rest of us. I hope that you have been uh out on your deck for at least the past three hours and 35 minutes.
I spent five hours on a high school league meeting today and now it's four hours on this, so it's been a long day. That's right.
But we appreciate, we do appreciate your time and uh your dedication. So, uh questions, board members? Um Director Marvin.
First of all, Mr. Queasley, that many up, that many hours online, living the dream. Secondly, um so stop laughing, I have that thing on. Um this um association with Mayo Clinic is so important and that kind of collaboration with our student athletes is just critically wonderful. Um depending on how our sports programs go forward for this next year, if we approve this agreement and we don't have sports, what's our financial obligation?
Good question. Uh this last spring, when we shut down for spring sports, the strength and conditioning and the athletic trainer piece, we um were prorated and we got quite a discount in the last quarter uh of last year uh because they furloughed those uh employees. Now, as of August 1st, um while the strength and conditioning are in a summer contract for right now, but um as of August 1st, um our intention is is that they'll be back on. Um as of today, we are running all sports in the fall except for football and um volleyball. We created a different season for those uh two activities later on in the year. So the intention is to run all other activities, um boys and girls cross-country, swim, but um tennis and soccer, boys and girls.
So if for some reason we have to cancel sports, are we still obligated financially to Mayo or is that negotiable?
That's neg- that's negotiable. It'll be prorated down, yes.
Good enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Good question, Director Marvin. Um and don't say there won't be no sports because that's like saying there's nope. Never mind. Anyway.
I didn't, I didn't say that. So thank you, Mark. I didn't say that.
Is there a motion?
Move to action.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved by Director Nathan, seconded by Director Amundson. Got that? Thank you.
No, no, no. I beat her to it. I beat her to it.
Go ahead.
The clerk has final say.
Yeah.
Um Ms. Amundson.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Barlow?
Aye.
Ms. Marvin?
Aye.
Mr. Schlussner?
Aye.
Chair Seelinger?
Aye.
Ms. Workman?
Aye.
Ms. Nathan, aye.
Super. It's now an action item. I will read the resolution. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby agree to approve a three-year agreement with Rochester Public Schools and Mayo Clinic Sports Medicine.
Move approval, Amundson.
Second.
Did I get Workman?
I'll let Workman have this one.
It's been moved and seconded. When you're ready, clerk.
Ms. Amundson?
Aye.
Mr. Barlow?
Aye.
Ms. Marvin?
Aye.
Mr. Schlussner?
Aye.
Chair Seelinger?
Aye.
Ms. Workman?
Aye.
Ms. Nathan, aye.
Super. Thanks again, Mr. Queasley. Please enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
The next item on the agenda is a closed session. Pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 13D.03, Subdivision 1, I move to go into closed session to discuss labor negotiations. May I have a second?
Second, Workman? Second, Workman? Did you hear me? Okay.
Clerk Nathan?
Ms. Amundson?
Aye.
Mr. Barlow?
Aye.
Ms. Marvin?
Aye.
Mr. Schlussner?
Aye.
Chair Seelinger?
Aye.
Ms. Workman?
Aye.
Ms. Nathan, aye.
Thank you. We are recessed at 8:45 PM. We convened at 8:58 PM. I move to amend the agenda to add the following item, Approval of the 2020-2022 Non-Schedule Work Guide Agreement. May I have a second?
Second, Amundson?
Clerk?
Hold on.
Yep. This is approval to add to the agenda.
Ms. Amundson?
Aye.
Mr. Barlow?
Aye.
Ms. Marvin?
Aye.
Mr. Schlussner?
Aye.
Chair Seelinger?
Aye.
Ms. Workman?
Aye.
Ms. Nathan, aye.
Thank you. Item 7.07, Approval of the 2020-2022 Non-Schedule Work Guide Agreement. This is an action item. I will read the resolution. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the 2020-2022 Non-Schedule Work Guide Agreement. Clerk?
Move approval.
Nope. It's an action item.
Okay.
Straight vote. Thanks, though.
Ms. Amundson?
Aye.
Mr. Barlow?
Aye.
Ms. Marvin?
Aye.
Mr. Schlussner?
Aye.
Chair Seelinger?
Aye.
Ms. Workman?
Aye.
Ms. Nathan, aye.
Thank you. Thank you to HR and negotiation team, unit bargaining folks. Much appreciated on the work, and we'll see you again next time. Thanks. Okay. Board members, one last item, 8.01, Future Discussions. We're working our way down our list. Is there anything anybody would like to add today?
Chair Seelinger?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question that came from our previous study session about committees. So you gave some homework out to people to write descriptions of the Legislative Committee and also for the possibility of a governance committee. When would you like us to bring those forward as draft descriptions?
Yes. That's a good question. I think we had a target of September, the first meeting in September. Director Marvin, do you remember if we talked about a deadline when we went over the homework?
That's an excellent question. And let's say the third week in August. Let's say that.
Knowing that it's the first...
Is that the next meeting? Not including the special session, is that not the next meeting?
That's correct.
And then will we discuss it during the committee report section of the agenda?
How about if we say the end of August, and we'll discuss it in September? And I think one of the questions you have, Ms. Amundson, is specifically the governance committee, which we have not approved yet. So that's a slightly different thing. The other ones, we have approved. So we need an updated description of those. And then the governance committee is something we're going to need to discuss about adding. So if that works...
If I had a draft ready, would I send it to who and by when? And where would it be in the agenda?
Yep. So we have a couple, I have a couple of different thoughts. We have a regular meeting on August 18th in two weeks. The week after, Tuesday, August 25th, we have a study session planned. Part of that study session is to approve superintendent goals per his contract. I believe on our, I don't have our tentative schedule. There might have been some talk about doing the board goals or the board self-evaluation pieces. I don't know if that's a time to stick it in or if that will overload that meeting. And then the September meeting, next regular meeting, is September 1st. So those are sort of the choices.
So I have a follow-up to what you just said. We have a meeting scheduled to approve the superintendent goals, but have we discussed the formation and how that's going to work yet? Won't we need to do that at some point prior to approving them?
I think, I'm not quite sure. I'd have to look back at how they came last year, if we had one meeting before that meeting or not.
Well, and I think the August 25th study session, you know, we can sort of work through that. And then, well, we have to approve them then as well.
Well, if it's a study session, you typically don't vote and take actions at that time. So that could be discussion on the goals, and then at that first September meeting, you could approve them.
I feel like that's what we did last year, but don't quote me.
And Chair Seelinger, given that the superintendent's contract, I think, says we have to have the goals done by the 31st, but remind me, Superintendent Munoz, were you able to just verbally extend that last year?
I don't know if I did that or not, but I mean, it was several months beyond the deadline, and I didn't have a problem with that, so.
Okay.
He, I believe last year or the year before, he gave them to us in written form, and then I think we took them from there. So, good questions. I'm sorry, I don't have more answers. We've been a little bogged down with the other topics, so.
Well, I'm happy with whatever you decide about the committee description. Just give me a date and instructions on which person to send it to and how it will be distributed to the rest of the board.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you for your flexibility and understanding.
I'm going to ask the same thing about the Legislative Committee description because I still don't know who my team is.
Right. So, yeah, I had a, we've had a lot of tech issues today, folks, so I wasn't able to send email out this morning from my computer. So I had, I had an email ready to go with the updated committee assignments, and it wouldn't load. So I will hopefully have computer access tomorrow when I get home so that I can send that out and then maybe a little bit more direction. How's that? It would make the most sense if the committees could come together in one resolution for approval as opposed to one at a time, but that's just my suggestion. Questions on that?
I think on the chart that you gave us, you had people tentatively assigned to the Legislative Committee. I don't have that in front of me right now, so I can't tell you what it is.
Yep. Okay. Anything else on future topics or when future topics are coming? Got a lot of topics.
I don't, I don't know that we have an answer, but the equity, the policy subcommittee met about the equity policy and about some other language related to equity that we might want the board to consider separate from a policy. And we don't have any firm dates. We have, I think, Ms. Marvin and Ms. Workman can just nod in agreement if I'm saying the right thing or cut me off if I'm not. But we recognize we have a full schedule, but we'd like to keep that train moving down the track.
Okay. Just if send us, if once you get closer to a timeline or figure out when you want to, you know, with a little heads up, we'll get it in there because it's important.
Yeah, I, I would just like to make a comment about the equity policy. I would, and maybe this has already happened, I would have legal take a look at it. And I would also encourage the board, or at least the Board Policy Committee, to provide an opportunity for the community to see it and provide input before you bring it to a meeting as a briefing item.
Yep. I think, I think that we probably all agree that that one is going to take a little bit, a little bit extra time in the process to make sure that we honor the intention, so. Anything else on that? No? Anything else? Going once, going twice? Got my gavel in hand. Okay, folks, we are going to be adjourned at 9:07 PM.